Anytime.
Okay, good evening, everyone. This is a special meeting of the Princeton zoning board of adjustment being held electronically via Zoom on April nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three at seven thirty P M pursuant to section thirteen of the Opens Public Meetings Act. Adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the sunshine notice of the Princeton zoning board of adjustment. Such notice had been placed on the official bulletin board at the municipal Princeton Municipal Complex and by transmitting a copy of the notice to the Princeton Packet Towns Topics, The Times, Trentonian, and by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton on April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two, and has been posted to the municipal website, W W W Princeton dot gov slash meetings pursuant to executive order one oh seven due to the state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID nineteen coronavirus. Notice that during this declared state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment will be held electronically via Zoom was transmitted to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on the twenty-fourth day of April two thousand twenty. Such notices have been placed on the official bulletin board at the municipal complex and on the Princeton website and are are to be maintained throughout the year and by transmitting a copy of same to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian Comcast Media, and by filing a copy thereof with the Clerk of Princeton, notices have also been placed on all window doors of the municipal complex. Okay, Claudia, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Chen? Paulson here. Sir Davich?
Here.
Floyd?
Here.
Driver?
Here.
Mr. Tenenbaum? Mr. Stein?
You're muted, George.
George?
I'm here.
Thank you. Ms. Donna?
Yes.
Jermaine Cohen?
Here. Okay. Do we have the minutes, Claudia? Were they distributed?
Yes, they were distributed at the last back in March. It was carried for the last meeting.
All right, that's right. You're right. You're right. Okay.
You want to carry it again?
You're not.
Yeah, I probably if nobody minds, I'd like to because I didn't I didn't get a chance to review them.
So we, Steve, I was going to suggest we have a lot of administrative things. Like the annual report, we've had that for several months. We just haven't had a spot on agenda. So maybe we can pull the board and see if a daytime meeting, a special meeting with no cases, we could just go over the administrative stuff at a at a future date. So.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Been pretty busy.
Okay, good.
Thanks.
All right. Do you want to do that now? Or we do that at the end of the meeting?
Well, Karen, we can just do a sunshine notice, right? We don't have to do a so we'll we'll send an email out.
Say that again. You said sunshine notice and?
For just an administrative meeting with no hearings. Special meeting.
Well, I mean, but it's still a meeting of the board, so I I do think we need to treat it a regular meeting, even if we restrict it purely to administrative stuff.
So maybe then we'll we'll get some dates off line and come back at the next meeting and.
Fine. Thank you. Okay. Good. Thanks, Karen. Thanks, Derek. Okay, let's start with our applications. Our first one is file number Z twenty-two dash two fifty-six. It's two thirty-eight Prospect Avenue, block fifty-six oh five, lot one, looks like one twenty point eight-two in the former borough.
Is that right? Maybe I'm misreading this. Isn't it lot one-ten?
Is that one-ten?
I think so. It's and I think it's two eighty-three.
I'm sorry. Yeah, it's one-ten.
Yeah.
It's one-ten and yeah, two eighty-three Prospect. Okay, Karen, are the notices in order?
I think, yeah, remember, the board took jurisdiction of this last month and carried it to tonight's hearing because the meeting ran too late to be able to hear the application.
Sure. Okay, all right, so we can get right into it. I see the applicant is here. Begin. Who's who's representing the applicant?
Hi, I'm here. I'm the applicant.
Okay. So please start.
Before you begin, sir, before you begin, we just need to swear you in. If you raise your right hand, you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful.
I do.
Thank you.
So it's nice to see you all again. I'll try and be brief. I'll make some general remarks and then I'll share my screen and show you the slides that are relevant. So my name is Farad Boivill. I'm a professor of history at Princeton. My wife, Jo, is a professor of physics and astrophysics. We were recruited here several years ago from Oxford. We now have two daughters. We love living in Princeton and raising our family here. And we live in a beautiful mid-century modern house on Prospect Avenue. It's quite a distinctive house. It was designed in nineteen sixty-one by a notable Princeton architect, Phil Holt, and he designed it for close friends of his. He's an important local architect, as you may know. His work is on the campus, major buildings all around New Jersey, New York, the Institute, and so on. But the house is a small nineteen-sixties house. It was designed for just three people. The kitchen is tiny. The bathrooms are tiny. Joe and I work from home a lot. We really need to study. Our kids are growing up. They need their own bedroom soon, so we need to build an extension. And the architect for our project is the dean of the Architecture School at Princeton, Monica Ponce de Leon. What we've planned with her is a design that does three things. First of all, it preserves the existing architectural vision of this house. Secondly, it's in harmony with the existing streetscape. And thirdly, it's as beneficial as possible to our neighbors. But to execute this plan, we need a variance relating to the two thousand and sixteen ordinance about garage doors. And that's simply because we want to keep our garage and its doors exactly where they are, where they've been for the last sixty-plus years. Everything else in our plans is completely compliant with the zoning rules. There's just this one detail. Let me take you through some slides and explain why I hope this will be uncontemptious. All right, so I'm going to share my screen. Here we go. I think you should be able to see my screen now. Can you see it?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so here's a view of the front of the house, which shows the existing architectural vision as it you can see it from the street. So the main house over here, you can see my cursor, can't you? On the left, then there's this delicate screened walkway in the middle, which is kind of a porch. And then on the right, there's the subsidiary block, which is the garage, which balances out the composition. And here's a view of it.
Sir, before you continue, why don't we consider all of your, I think you're going to have some photos and maybe some drawings as well, correct?
I'm going to take you through all the slides, yes.
Okay, then we, why don't we collectively call them exhibit A one? Thank you.
Fine. Yeah, can I continue?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, so here's another picture just showing the front of the house from the from the road. There's the main house. There's the walkway. There's the current garage, which we want to keep exactly where it is. And now, so our plan for the extension, basically, this is a plan of of the site from above, would keep the garage there and build another story on top and preserve the relationship between the house and the block on the right. So we'd keep that walkway, that delicate walkway, exactly where it is. We'd keep the footprint exactly where it is. And we'd insert a small narrow connection just here where my cursor is between the main house and the garage block. There are many reasons to do it like that. It makes architectural sense, and it also minimizes the impact on our neighbors. And especially the neighbors on our right, as you're looking at the house, which is a corner lot, which is our neighbors on that side are actually on Cedar Lane, one hundred and eighteen Cedar Lane. Let me show you the context. So this is our house and lot, main house and the garage. This is our neighbors over here, and their backyard is exactly here. So if we keep the building of the garage and the story above where it currently is, it doesn't really impinge on their backyard. There's also a line of trees over here. But the moment you get beyond where it currently is, there are no trees, and that is the main part of their backyard. It's quite a narrow bit of backyard that they have. There are gates over here and gates over here. So that's their main outside space. If we had to follow the rules of the ordinance and push everything back by sixteen feet, it would actually be eighteen feet from where it currently is because it's currently slightly in front of the house, it would basically be very disadvantageous for their backyard. It would also destroy the architectural coherence of our existing buildings. I'll show you. This is what we'd have to do to comply with the ordinance as written. That makes no architectural sense. It destroys the nicest part of our backyard, makes for a very awkward impossible connection between the existing structure and the new structure. And as I just said, it destroys our neighbors' backyard. Here, you can see where the trees end and where that would be impinging on their light and their and their view. So all those are the positive criteria under your rules. They are particular to our property, in particular to the the site and the the fact that there's a corner lot next to us. And my final point is that every other house on our block and on the next block and ninety-nine percent of the houses in the entire neighborhood that we live, Riverside, have exactly the same kind of existing garage placement that we have. That's to say, a garage in line with the house or slightly in front of it. As you can see here, the red lines are the house facades right next to us, and the garages are in blue. In every case, or almost every case, where they're next to the house, they are aligned exactly as ours is. And this is not just the case on our block, but the next block and every block around us. Let me show you some images. There you can see some pictures of what it looks like from the street. In addition, many of these garages have second stories on top of them. It's a very normal thing in our neighborhood, exactly as we're planning to do. So having to move everything back sixteen feet or more just because we're rebuilding the existing garage would just be silly. And it would look completely out of place in the existing streetscape. And that goes to the negative criteria regarding the public good and the general character of the neighborhood. So I'll stop there. I'll stop stirring my screen. I'll just say, please grant us this variance. We applied a long, long time ago. I think it's not a contrition, be a controversial matter. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Board members, any questions of the applicant?
Do you have a drawing of what it would look like with the second story on the on the garage?
Is that is that relevant to the to the judgment? I mean, we we have the plans we submitted months ago. I can show you the ground plans. They haven't changed very much. The the you know, the roofline and so on probably has changed.
I believe that, Steve, I believe there is an elevation in the drawing packet.
I think we submitted this in a different set of slides. Would you like me to share it and show you?
No, I'll go back and look for it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it appears to be sheet A two dash oh one. Any other questions, board members? Okay. We're going to go into, we're going to open this up to the public at this point. Do you have anything you'd like to say before we do that?
Just that we have strong support from our neighbors who own the house next to us on Cedar Lane. That's all. I don't think I have anything else to add.
Okay, have we, Derek, have we received anything from anyone, any letters on this project?
No. No, no comments either pro or con.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm going to open it up to the public. Claudia, has anybody indicated they'd like to speak on this application?
I see no hands.
Okay, we'll give it a second here. Okay, hearing done, we'll close the public portion of the hearing and allow you to make a closing statement before we go into executive session, you know, discussion amongst ourselves and and then a vote potentially.
I'll just add that our neighbors offered to write a letter, but we were under the impression that that wouldn't make any difference, and that wouldn't be considered. Only people who turn up to the actual meeting can be considered. So I didn't. I told them when the meeting was last month. I didn't tell them again.
Okay.
That's all, but.
Steve, um, yeah, Steve, there's something in Mr. Bridges' report about a room in the hallway of the second floor, which has no doors or windows, and it's marked with an X. Would this be a better time to learn what that room is for, learn a little bit more about it?
It appears to me that I would interpret that as a two-story high space, but if you'd like to elaborate on that, that'd be great.
It's a two-story height space. You're right. It's not a room.
Okay, thank you. Just showing my architectural background here. It worked. All that education helped. Okay. So let's go into executive session and, oh, excuse me, Eve, do you have any other questions?
No, that's it.
Okay, all right, let's go into executive session and board members, do you have any comments, questions? Or would you like, anyone like to make a motion?
I have one question for Derek, just for clarification. Derek, in your memo, you identified as a C one variance. I just wanted to ask, is that because that's what the applicant has identified, or do you think that it's more suited as a C one as opposed to a C two?
He had requested consideration under the C one. I think his his analysis could be, you know, go under the C two as well. He's enumerated the negatives and the positives and.
Okay, because right now the house and the lot are compliant with the bulk regulations, correct? Except for the setback of the garage, but that that would be grandfathered. But they need this variance because now they're they're renovating the house and reconstructing. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Karen?
No, that didn't answer my question. Thank you.
Okay, good. Thank you.
I like this project. I move. We approve it.
Steve.
What do you think, Stephen?
Yeah, but as a as a C one or a C two?
Well, if the applicant asks for a C one, I'd stick with a C one.
Okay, well, I'm going to press you a little bit because the C one, of course, it's it's basis is that there's something exceptional about the shape of the lot or unique conditions that's going to make it particularly difficult for the applicant to develop the property.
If I may, we were just following the advice we were given here by the. Under C one or C two or both?
Yeah.
Well, in this case, I think I agree with Stephen. I think that developing the or putting the garage in based on the ordinance would impact the neighbor. I think, quite frankly, unjustifiably, I think the the house itself is is very nice. It's been in the community for many, many years and and I think that's relevant to this application, and I think the addition is very sensitive to the original house.
And and that can be the basis really for either a C one or a C two, keeping in mind that with the C two, there are all the different purposes of zoning, including promotes, you know, the appropriate use of the property from it provides a better zoning alternative. So that's the only reason I'm asking because it sounds as if that's that's the basis that the board looks like would feel that the barrier should be granted because it's a better alternative for this site, but I just I just want to clarify so that we understand what your analysis is and which type of variance you want to categorize it under.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes.
Steve? Yeah, I I came to this meeting in reading this application. I had the same concern as Karen. I I didn't see how I could stretch a C one for this. I bought in enough to the applicant's explanation. I'm more comfortable with the C two because C one talks about the property and it's usually more the physical property as opposed to the house. But anyway, its relationship to its neighbor, I kind of, I can stretch that with the app and said, and the neighbor being corner lot. But I I think Karen's point is valid, and I felt that way all along.
Okay, all right. Would we need additional testimony from the applicant in order to do?
I I don't think so. I guess the only thing would be just to identify, you know, that there are a number of purposes of zoning, as I indicated. There's category A promotes the appropriate use and in a manner that will promote the general welfare. We have.
The better alternative.
Yeah.
You know, you have an existing building there. It's more consistent with the existing building and, you know, that makes it a better alternative. So.
I'm in my motion there.
I agree. I think it should be a C two. You know, the applicant talked about adequate open space, desirable visual environment through creative development techniques, good civic design.
Yeah.
I I think those can be used to justify C two.
Then I would have been in my motion. I'll I'll say a C two then.
Okay.
We need we need to.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other comments related to the motion? Okay, Claudia, can you call the roll, please?
Paulson? Yes. Sir Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Ms. Donna?
Yes.
Jermaine Cohen?
Yes. Thank you for coming before us. Go forth and build.
I just want to share with a couple.
Thank you.
Want to share with with a couple of the older board members that this was the house that longtime board member Charlie St. John lived in.
Oh, really?
Oh.
Very long.
Drop many packages off at his house over the years.
I I just a kind of just a curiosity question, but just the 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 angle that the garage is built on as opposed from the house. Why is there any explanation from the architect?
Yes, it it follows the the line of the plot. So it maximizes, it goes right up to the edge of the ten-yard setback. And the plot is not not straight there. Yeah.
Okay. For a modern architect, it just seemed very odd to have it be canted in that one, you know, there's, you know, eight degrees or whatever that is, but okay, thank you.
I'm sure the architect was very pleased when he did that. It just sort of set it off a little bit, which is nice. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thanks for coming before us. Appreciate it. Okay, our next case is case Z twenty-three dash three thirty-five.
Six.
Excuse me? All right. Six oh one Lake Drive Block. Where's that? Sixty-eight oh one, lot eleven, in the R three zone. And this again, we I believe we took jurisdiction of this earlier.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Mr. Hillier or whomever, who's representing? Ah, there you go. Ah. Okay, please begin.
Bob is going to present the information with respect to a home that he's designed for himself. What's most fascinating, I think you'll enjoy hearing about his goal of getting as close to a zero-carbon house as he can. And that's been the basis, the the cause of his request to come before you for a very small height to setback variance. We have nineteen slides and Karen, with your permission, we would mark them all as A one.
That's fine. Thank you.
And swear in Bob Hillier, who will present the slides to you.
I will. Mr. Hillier, you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful.
Yes, of course.
We're getting an echo here. Mr. Hillier, you're muted.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
There we are. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I'm not a technology buff like this.
Uh-oh, you froze.
Okay. Good. Thank you all for seeing me, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here. What I'm going to show you is.
Excuse me, one second. Karen, do you want to swear, Mr. Hillier?
I did. I did.
Oh, you did. Oh, that's right. We did that before, right? Okay, thank you. Sorry about that.
That's right. Not a problem. So I bought the lot at six oh one Lake Drive, and just a little bit of background, I live on a beautiful house on the Delaware River in New Hope, and I lived there for thirty-four years with my wife, who is also an architect, and she ran our Philadelphia office. And so that was halfway between the two. I lost her unfortunately about five months ago to Alzheimer's. And so I'm, I have no reason to live in a house that big anymore. And our daughter's fully grown and now has her her own daughter. And so I decided to return to Princeton where I grew up. And I bought a house on the lake, which is very similar to the house on the Delaware in its orientation to the water and it the privacy that the that that kind of a site gives you. I'm trying to build or my intention is to build a a zero, as close to a zero-carbon house as I can. And we're going to use all the greatest technology and latest technology to make that happen. And in designing the house, Derek has been very helpful in making sure that we understood all the news zoning wrinkles and various and issues, and we've adjusted the design to completely comply with everything. But there's one issue that we cannot satisfy, and that is the the fact that the site slopes twenty-eight feet from the road down to the lake. And so we're seeking a variance because on we have a fifteen-foot side yard on one side, and the house is in complete conformity at the front. But it it ends up with an eight or nine-foot variance at the back because of the slope that goes runs down the house. So I'll take you through the whole design and 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 show you what it's about. And it's really a very simple, I think, request for a variance. This is the house is it will appear when you enter the driveway and and the first view it. It's a nineteen, it was a nineteen fifty's house and the the left side of the house we're saving completely. The big difference is that the garage has been moved out to the front because the garage before had a wonderful view of the lake and we're turning that into a new kitchen or I'm turning that into a new kitchen. Next slide shows you leaving, leaving the house. This is the driveway loops in and loops out. And here you can see more, more of it. There's the garage and then there's the second floor that we've added with the with a kind of a nice atrium setting with the balcony to three bedrooms. Right now, the house has three bedrooms and two of them are small ten by ten foot bedrooms. And they share a bath and upstairs I'm putting three bedrooms with their own baths. And then I'm turning the first floor into an office and a master bed suite or master bedroom suite. Principal bedroom suite, as they're now called. The what we're doing in terms of the zero carbon is we're putting in a geothermal heating and air conditioning systems. And we're doing closed closed insulation on sprayed on the inside. And then we're using a very dense insulation, two inches of additional insulation on the outside. And then we're sheathing, sheathing the building in a very, very interesting, thin concrete rain screen. And it come, it's going to be in a slight beige color which is this, the rendering is pretty accurate in that. And you'll see there's a stripe that's a little bit darker. And in those cases, the the concrete actually has a travertine like finish. So it's tends to be a little bit darker and it and it makes the elevation more interesting. The tower that you see is a is basically a stair tower that starts at the basement in in the existing basement foundation and climbs all the way to the roof where there's a roof deck that can overlook the bike and see the the rowing races. We're going to have photo votages on all of the roof except one roof where there's such shading that we were there, we're putting a green roof. And we're using low, low flow fixtures, star appliances and high efficiency energy systems every place that we can. And we're also building the house on the existing foundations. We're removing half of the house because there's a playroom down on the ground floor, a walkout playroom that had a seven foot ceiling and we decided to raise that to an eight foot ceiling. So we're taking part of the house and tearing it down and built rebuilding it at a one foot higher elevation. What you see here is a little closer view and you'll see there's a gateway there with a black steel gate. And next to it is a frosted glass fence. And this creates a courtyard, which is a kind of an entry into the into into the house itself, but it's an outdoor courtyard that gets you to the front door, which is about forty feet forward. We're at the, we're using, reusing the existing front entrance. And in this, we're going to have a koi pond in this courtyard. The stairway that goes all the way up also has the same frosted glass. And it's a, it's a double glass. It's a German glass system. And the stairway is freestanding with within that space. And the slope on the right side was created when we learned that we had this this variance. And that was one of the adjustments we made to minimize the variance that we would request. Now, the next slide is shows the house in the context of the neighborhood. And you, if you look at the houses on either side of us and the one especially at the at the bottom, you can see they're all much larger than the existing house. The existing house has twenty-one hundred square feet. And when we're done, it's going to have about three thousand square feet, writing nine hundred square feet to it. So this shows you the lake on the right side and Lake Drive on the left and the general caliber of the neighborhood. And our house is not going to match any of these in in volume. It's it's a little, it's just smaller than every house on the street. Next, next slide. This shows you the house as it exists today and flanked by the two neighbors. The building on the left and then the building on the right is the closest neighbor. And he has the same issue that we have, only he hasn't much. The house that I'm that I've purchased has a twenty-six foot or twenty-three foot issue on the with the narrow side yard and his, his is a thirty-seven foot issue. So here you can see the closer and you can see that his house is going to is actually much higher than ours will be at the end of the day. Next, and there's the garage, which we're moving forward. And we're turning it so that the garage doors don't face the street anymore. Next slide. This shows this the required one-on-one slope from the property line. And you can see because of the slope of the site, it that the house projects out. The existing house actually breaks through that plane. And there, there we are. And our house. The next slide. And this is a side view and it shows again, starting from each property line, the angle and the part that is of the house, it's an invasion into that that plane. Next slide. This shows the house in the context of its neighbors and the constraints that we're dealing with. Number one is the slope of twenty-eight feet from the street down to the lake. And what's interesting is of that twenty-eight feet, nine of those feet are in the twenty-foot drop that goes by the garage, the existing garage. And so one third of that entire slope is is basically concentrated right in that area. The other constraint that we have is that we can't build anything out the back because the sewer easement goes there. And it's carrying a a twenty-four inch sewer line. It's a sanitary sewer line going to Kingston.
So where does that, excuse me, one, one second. So where does that sewer line run? It goes down to the lake and then it runs in the lake?
No, it go, it goes to Kingston.
Well.
Yeah.
At the base in the rear. Oh, I see. I'm sorry. I'm looking. Yes, I understand. Sorry. Okay.
Good question. Okay, next, next slide. This shows you the proposed house with the courtyard. The courtyard is the kind of gray area. That's the koi pond. And you can see that even with the addition, we're about ten, ten feet, fifteen feet behind our neighbor to the left. And I've met with the neighbor there because I felt that we had the most impact on their environment. And he was very pleased with what he saw. And he hoped that he would, that we would get approved tonight. He wished me good luck. So this is the the house as proposed, next slide. And this shows you the foundations, the blue part is the foundation that we are reusing. And the part in the middle, the square one that you see there, that is go, goes all the way down to the basement. And that's where we're putting the stair that starts the basement and climbs all the way up to the roof terrace. And the foundation on the left is where the garage is, and that's where we intend to put the new kitchen. And we're moving the garage up to the front. And between there and is a basically what we call the entertainment closet and a laundry and and a mudroom. And then over on the right is, this is a crawl space. And and it is, that's where my office will be and the principal bedroom suite will be in that corner. And and then the the new basement room is is basically the part you see in the blue with the written part. And as I mentioned, what's important about saving all of this blue is that if we were to remove it and replace it with new foundations, it would create fifty-four thousand three hundred and forty pounds of carbon. And it would take eleven hundred and thirty-two trees to absorb that mature trees to absorb that carbon in a year. And furthermore, those eleven hundred and thirty-two trees would require twenty-two acres of woods in which to grow. And so we're, by saving these foundations rather than having to move the whole house eight feet, we're, we're really driving home the zero carbon point. Next slide. Now, this shows the house as with the setback lines as it applies to the street. Where there's no problem at all, as it applies at the front of the house where there's no problem. But then as you go down the hill on the right, you can see that that setback becomes a bigger and bigger length and it in fact intersects with the the existing garage now of the kitchen, that part. And it intersects the top of the stair tower to get you to the observation deck. And on the side elevations, you could see the the where it starts at the top of the hill and where it start, where it comes down at the lower. And you can see over on the right-hand side of the difference between the two lines is thinner. That shows that there's less of a problem of the slope on that side of the house than there is on the left side of the house, which is it's and it's existing. It's not something that we're creating. Next slide, this is an aerial view of it showing the penetration of the house in that, in that plane. And then what's interesting is is the next slide shows if the site was flat, that would be the condition. So you see, if if we just took that plane and and used it on a flat site, we wouldn't have any, any variance at all. But it's the slope basically in the exaggerated condition that's that's driving us in into the variance. And so the solution that's been proposed is that we simply raise that plane to one point one five seven instead of one over one. As and that's the variance that we're asking for. That's the bottom line of what we're here for. And so I'll take any questions that you may have.
Okay. Do you have any questions, Mr. Hillier, with regard to the plan, with the variance request?
No.
I'm sorry. Is that you, Jim?
No, it's me saying no. No questions.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
I'm sorry.
So the only issue, I guess, is I'm looking at the floor plan. So if the stair, based on the floor plan drawing, if the stairs was moved theoretically to the right, towards the, towards the courtyard, towards the garage, but that would push it further back and eliminate the need for the variance, but also change the second floor slightly. I think the, I think the I think the site slope is significant here and I think it's I I understand exactly what you faced. All right, I answered my own question.
The presentation and previously and the issue about C one versus C two, we had originally taken the approach that you've just mentioned, that there's an exceptional topographic condition that's been discussed. There's also an extraordinary situation with respect to the sewer line. You can't move the house down toward the lake. On the other hand, what Bob is trying to do with his zero carbon approach falls so nicely into one of the purposes of zoning, the promotion and utilization of renewable energy resources. And that would justify a C two. I I I in light of the approach that Bob's taking, I'd almost prefer to ask you to grant a C two based on the these special circumstances.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Board members, any questions?
Mr. Hillier, would you just, for for me, would you just say again the two statistics of why you did not want to take out the you said, you you said something about both the the concrete and the trees, and I I think you might be muted again, or at least I can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. So the the question, the trees were, we're not taking down the trees between our house and the neighbor. And that's why we're putting the sod roof on part of the house because the photovoltaics just won't work there. They're evergreen sincerely. So the trees that I was referring to with was the number of trees that it would take to absorb the carbon if we had to rebuild the foundations. And Mr. Chairman, you had asked about moving the stair. We've located the stair where it is because that's the foundation that's in the basement that will will accept the stair.
Yeah, I realized that when I
That was the first thing I did is, well, let's move it. And the immediate question was, do you know what that's going to do, you know, so?
Thank you.
And how much, you said how much concrete?
It's not, it's not the concrete. It's the concrete takes, it's not, concrete takes a lot of energy to produce.
Right.
And and so it creates a lot of carbon in its manufacture. And then the other thing is that removing a foundation with all the jackhammers and then grinding it up so it can be reused again takes another unbelievable amount of energy besides trucking it away and trucking both away and new concrete to the site. That all is taken into account and it ends up with, I was stunned when I saw the number, frankly.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Okay, since we have no more questions, we will open this up to the public. Tar, do you want to say anything before we do that? You're muted.
We're, we're fine.
Okay, good. Well said. Okay. We'll open this up to the public. Claudia, has anybody indicated they'd like to speak on this application?
There are no hands.
Okay. All right, wait one second here. Okay, we'll close the public portion of the hearing.
One second. I just got a hand. Hold on.
Okay. Is that Elena May speaking?
Yeah, hi, good evening.
Can you, can you your video?
Yeah. I want to support Ms. May, it's hard for us to hear you, plus we need to be able to see you. Can you turn on your video?
You just muted yourself.
And I think she's here for another
I'm sorry, Michael.
I think she's here for another application.
Oh.
But she'll clarify. I think it's Hawthorne Avenue, but
Okay. Ms. May, can you unmute yourself just for a moment, please? Okay. I guess, since we can't see nor hear her, we'll assume, as Michael suggested, it's another hearing that she's coming to speak and now she's disappeared. So all right, so we're back to, we'll close the public portion of the hearing. Mr. Tar, if you'd like to make a closing remark. Mr. Tar, if you'd like to make a closing remark, and then we'll go into executive session. Okay, you're good. All right, board members, any questions or comments or motions?
So is it a C two or C one?
I think, I think C two, based on what Mr. Tar suggested, right? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, all right.
Well, I would, I would, I think it's an absolutely beautiful home. I think that uh, the design of it, taking into account that the slope is a, is a condition that is challenging. I think that the uh, the design has been done in a, in a se- in a sensitive way as it can with the constraints. And it's, it's a, I think it's a beautiful home. And my only condition was that um, once it's completed, I'd like to have a tour, please. So I'd like to actually vote to uh, prove the, prove under a C two.
Okay, um, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Um, just a comment, I um, when I first looked at the application, I was concerned about the stairway and again, just the uh, projection into the uh, into the grade plane. But now, understanding exactly why it was done, I think it's uh, I think the house overall is, is uh, very sensitive to the site. And uh, and quite frankly, the environment, so. Okay.
Your honor?
Oh, and, okay, so.
Owen?
It's Derek.
Yeah, there's a note in my memo, um, Mr. Hillier's applying for a uh, encroachment into the easement. A slight portion of the back of the deck goes into the easement, so there should be a condition that that is either satisfied prior to the uh, issuance of building permits, or he can present a design that does not encroach into that easement, um. You know, but that needs to be addressed one way or the other.
Derek, are you, so you're suggesting that that be a condition of approval? That the Mr. Hillier's uh, uh, need for an encroachment in the easement will have to be approved by the uh, P, is it PSOC? Or is it going to be the governing body or?
I believe, I believe it's yes.
We, yeah, I didn't want to, it's not uh, relevant to the tonight's hearing, but we're, have a slight movement of the easement has been agreed to by the town. So we're gonna, not going to be in the easement when all said and done.
But I just, I mean, if you apply before that's done, then I
No, you're quite right. It should be a condition that we not be in the area.
Yeah, I think it should be in, satisfied, sure. Okay. Is that okay with you, Jim, that modification to the motion?
Yes, this is.
Okay, all right, um, Claudia, can you call her all, please?
Bolson? Yes. Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Bragger?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenbaum?
I don't know if I'm allowed to vote, because I was a little bit late.
Oh, well, that
It's yes.
Were you, I, uh, I think Harlan, you were here when the hearing began, is that correct, Derek?
I thought you came and they, I had this hearing starting at slightly before eight o'clock, and I saw you here at that point, Harlan, so.
Perfect, then my, I, I vote to approve.
Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very well done, Mr. Hillier.
Beautiful.
I really appreciate it. Thank you so much for your time.
You're welcome.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along here. Um, our next case is uh, case number uh, Z twenty dash eight sixty twenty-four Turhune Road, block seven thousand six, lot one, in the R six zone. Karen?
Did you say fourteen Turhune?
It's fourteen, uh, Steve, fourteen.
I see. Yes, you're right, sorry, dark in here, so, okay. Um, yes.
The noticing is in order, and the board has jurisdiction tonight to hear the application.
Okay, um, Derek, I forgot to do it in the first two, but would you like to just review your memo for us?
And we better swear you in, Mr. Bridget, you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful.
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, uh, Marky, often, uh, three and a, this Nick are the owners of fourteen Turhune Road. It's located in the former Princeton Township in the R six zone. They are seeking a C one and C two variance, uh, request for installation of a fence. An exception to the six and a half foot, foot maximum height restriction. Um, subject property is complying with the applicable bulk regulations. This lot is an irregularly shaped lot at the corner of Mount Lucas and Turhune Road. And this intersection was redesigned by the municipality in two thousand nineteen. Part of that reconstruction involved gray changes in the installation of a retaining wall on the subject property as it faces uh, Mount Lucas. In conjunction with the municipal project, the applicant applied for and uh, was approved to eliminate the existing driveway on Mount Lucas, um, and install a new driveway off of Turhune. The applicant later installed the fence where the former driveway had been, and the new fence was designed to meet the existing uh, sections of fence on either side of it. And the gray drops down where the old fence was removed. And the new fence exceeds the maximum height of six and a half uh, feet. Uh, I contacted the applicant and advised her that the fence didn't comply with the, the ordinance requirements and that she could either uh, they could either apply for a variance or, or bring the height down. Um, they chose to to go for the uh, variance. Um, and there's an approximately forty-foot section of the fence that exceeds the six and a half foot height limitation. Um, the applicants did apply for a variance as soon as I contacted them, which was back during COVID, which is uh, May of twenty twenty. Um, and it's complete now and ready for their consideration. The ordinance is section ten B three nineteen point one, and it, and limits uh, heights of walls and fences to be six feet, six inches above grade. Um, it does allow for a uh, allowance of twenty percent of that length uh, of a fence or garden wall, can't exceed the maximum height because of grade variations. Um, but they, they do exceed that slightly, so the max height of the fence in, in one portion is eight feet, whereas the um, proposed or the maximum permitted height is six and a half feet. And they've requested consideration under the C one and the C two, as I mentioned earlier. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to address them.
Thank you.
I have a question. Derek, you said, you said the ordinance says it could exceed the six point five by twenty percent?
Right. Yes, sir. But it's slightly more than that. If I were here.
You know, you know how much, I'm not, I, I, I can't do the math very quickly. You know, by how much it's exceeding it?
Uh, I don't know, maybe the applicant does. I, I checked when um, a couple months ago, but I haven't, I don't have it in my notes, so. It's only the portion along Mount Lucas, the rest of the fence uh, complies in the, the, the area where it drops down is where their old driveway used to go, which was, the grade was increased with the retaining wall. The reason they needed to move their driveway, um, part of it was the municipal project, um, it was
Well, it looks like it's about it, it looks like they still need about six inches to twenty percent rule. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I guess, um, I think uh, the applicant can speak.
Uh, yeah, hi, hi, everyone. Thank you, um, Derek, for that, uh, you know, summary, that was very helpful. Um, I, yeah, I just have some um, photos.
Ms. Visage, before you continue, we just need to swear you in. Do you swear for your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
And you just started to say that you were going to have some slides. And why don't we just collectively call them all your exhibit A one? Can that be okay?
Yes, that's good. Um, yeah, so as, as Derek explained, we, um, our house, there was a lot of construction around here as part of the township's effort to improve the uh, Mount Lucas and Turhune Road, um, and Cherry Hill intersection. And uh, so that necessitated the building of this fence, so if I, let me pull up my um, slides and share my screen. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, we are uh, here, just a map of the area. Our, our lot, our house is uh, right here on this corner. As you can see, it's this oddly shaped triangular lot with Turhune Road and Mount Lucas Road. And um, originally, the house had um, just a very small portion of the, of the fence around it. Here is the survey from the original home, wh- as we bought it. The driveway, the garage is here, and the driveway went down directly into the Mount Lucas and Cherry Hill Road intersection, um, and it had a very steep grade going downhill here. Um, and there was an old fence that was uh, tall. It was an eight-foot fence that went around this corner like this, blocking off the yard. Um, and again, for context, here is the uh, here is the intersection, um, the same intersection. Um, now, before, uh, and this is how it looked before, from the Mount Lucas looking up, so you can see the very steep grade here, and this is the old fence. Um, the eight-foot tall fence, and the house on the other side, also, there's a, an uphill going um, up Mount Lucas. So our neighbors, even though they have a the, the top of their fence is in line with our old fence here. And uh, so the township then built this beautiful retaining wall to um, uh, going all the way here, and they agreed to build it all the way across our, our old driveway when we moved the driveway to the front side of the house. Um, and so we had this higher elevation, and this is what it looks like now. So we actually went ahead and built it. Um, the reason is because we have, my husband and I have, um, now, we have three young children. And we really needed to build a fence there, um, to protect the kids and, and block off the yard. It was during COVID, so uh, there were no, um, you know, zoning board meetings for several months. And uh, so we just went ahead and built it. And so I, I hope that, you know, a- after seeing this, you will agree to approve it as, after, after the fact. Um, but this is what it looks like now. There's beautiful uh, trees built by the township as well um, going across, and this is, at this point here, uh, this is where the old fence is. And this is where the neighbor's fence is, so you can see that the new fence that we built kind of just matches on either side, um, both sides. Um, and so we believe that this variance um, benefits the aesthetically, the you know, there's a lot of benefits to it. It, it looks aesthetically nice, um, and functionality. Uh, we really need a fence there for, to, you know, block off our yard from the traffic and protect our children from the very busy intersection. And um, we believe that the um, you know, detriment is minimal, uh, given the, the circumstances. And it is an oddly shaped lot, as, as Derek mentioned, so we felt that this was really the best solution. Um, and this is what it looks like from the inside, looking out uh, towards the intersection. Um, and I think that's, that's about it. So, I'm gonna stop sharing and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Board members, any questions, and the applicant? Okay. All right, um, we're going to go into executive session now. Um, so generally, before we do that, we ask the applicant or their representative, if they want to make any additional comments before, before we open it up.
Steve, we need to open it to the public first.
Excuse me?
We, we need to open it to the public first?
That's, that's what I was asking for, a closing comment.
Said executive session.
No, I, I meant public, yes. So. Okay, do you want to say anything else before we open it up to the public?
Uh-uh, thanks.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll open it up to the public. Claudia, has anybody indicated they'd like to speak?
There are no hands.
Okay, thank you. We'll just give it a second or two. So, okay, we'll close the public portion of the hearing. Uh, again, you can make a closing comment before we go into executive session and then potentially vote.
I'm good, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, uh, we're in executive session. Board members, any questions, comments, or motions? Jim?
I guess, I have a question.
Oh, yeah, Michael.
Think I'm not following. The forty-foot section or so that's exceeds the height is, is the actual fence itself that tall, or the old grade? Which looks to me, it changed after, with landscaping. How does it get to be oh, too high? Where's grade on this?
That would be helpful. Look at the images you had before, the inside and outside again, of the retaining wall from the outside and then
Yeah.
The inside. When again?
Yeah, I'll uh, I'll share again. Um, so it depends on where you're measuring from. Uh, if you measure from the inside, there's a pretty steep grade, even just from, from the inside to outside of the fence. If you measure from the inside, this is actually around uh, seven and a half from the inside. And um, and if you measure from the outside, then you can see there's this, it like, it's pretty steep there. So, yeah, of course, it's, appears taller from the outside, but, um.
Okay, so is seven and a half feet the max it gets? Or is it higher?
As measured from the inside, yes.
Yeah.
Then it's seven and a half, but um, I don't know how you want to measure it, um.
It appears it'd be even taller if the town didn't continue the retaining wall.
Oh, yeah, much.
Okay.
Look at the other picture again for a second. The retaining wall sign, okay. No one asked the time, I think it reduced the number of street signs. I see five in that one little section. My golly.
Very complicated intersection.
I know it is, I, I draw, I, I didn't really notice there were five when I drove by there, but uh, I see them now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Michael, you okay with that?
Yeah, I think that, you know, the, the circumstances, it seems, hmm. Yeah, it seems like it's kind of the best solution. I mean, it would be, I said, oh, six feet, it probably would still give you the coverage. But I don't mind taking down the whole fence just to get it down, or seven feet to get it down half a foot, um.
Yeah.
But it aligns with the fence adjacent to it. Now, just aside, Derek, that fence in the house to the left on this photograph, that fence wouldn't be compliant either, would it?
Um, the fence itself is six feet. But, you know, it's on the uh, it's always a judgment call when, when it's on a retaining wall, like
Retaining wall, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's, that is kind of interesting, because the retaining wall is probably four feet right there, so.
Yeah.
And a half, so it's, there's another retaining wall below it, actually, so it's
What is, what's the board length? Is the board length eight feet or seven and a half feet, or is the board length?
Six and a half. Our board length is eight feet, yes.
You can see it varies. You can see where the old fence is approximately six and a half feet.
Yeah.
If you watch the bottom of it, it kind of bows out um, to cover, because other, if you didn't have that differential, there would be space underneath the fence, wouldn't fence the yard.
Right.
But the planks go below grade from the inside, right? You can see here that the
Okay.
Yeah, is that a kicker board going the other direction, or is it actually, I guess, the fence boards going down?
Well, because it was so steep, we put a horizontal bar there to prevent the soil from just rolling out.
Yeah. Boards, keep your boards from rotting away too, because you have it's a kicker board, yeah, that makes sense. Yeah, I can't see any, any other way really to address it, um, given the circumstances, so.
Yeah, me. Yeah.
And, and it's aesthetically pleasing because of
Yeah.
The fence on both sides.
It's a nice even height, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think it's the best solution, given the circumstances. So I'd, I'd vote to approve it.
You moved to approve it?
I moved to approve, yes.
Well.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Um, okay, any questions?
Each type of variance tonight, um, does anybody have thoughts as to whether they feel it's a hardship? Does anybody have thoughts as to whether they feel it's a hardship as a result of the work by the town? Or do you feel it's more appropriately a C two?
I think it's a hardship and there's also a topo problem.
Right, yeah.
Which makes it a C one.
Yeah, yeah.
It's definitely a topo problem.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion. And we have a second, and we're going to treat this as a C one. Are there any questions on the motion before we vote?
I'm sorry, who's second? Thank you.
Okay. Claudia?
Wilson? Yes. Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Boy?
Yes.
Mrs. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
You're welcome. Okay. Our next case is twenty four Hawthorne Avenue. Excuse me, it's file number Z twenty three dash three sixteen. Twenty four Hawthorne Avenue, block twenty eight point oh two, twenty three point oh two, lot eighteen in the R three zone. Karen, is everything in order?
Yes, the noticing is in order. The board has jurisdiction tonight to hear it.
Derek, would you like to summarize your memo?
Yes, sir. Bonnie Basler and C Todd Reichardt are the owners and applicants. You know, in twenty four Hawthorne, located in the former borough in the R three zone. They're requesting C one and C two variances to permit the construction of a second permit the construction of a second floor to an existing detached garage in exception to setback and height requirements. Subject lot and property are complying with respect to the applicable bulk regulations. The existing garage is noncomplying with regard to the required five foot setback. The existing setback is three feet to the foundation. The rear yard setback requirement is five and the existing is three point two to the foundation. The height, which is based on the setback at that point, should be ten feet and it's thirteen point nine eight. And the applicant is proposing to add a second floor to this existing detached garage. First floor will remain a two car garage. The second floor will be accessed by an exterior spiral staircase. Use of the second floor is supposed to be a a studio for dance with a potential use of an accessory dwelling unit. Post second floor plans reflect the pantry, room closet and a half bath. Set tree structures setbacks vary based on the size and the height and the number of stories. So, for example, an accessory structure not exceeding a hundred square feet and one story. And ten feet in height is three feet setback requirement and accessory structure not exceeding one and a half stories. And twenty five, twenty feet in height is five feet and accessory structure not exceeding two stories. And I believe it's twenty five feet in height. It's the same structure as the the principal dwelling. The addition requires a side yard setback. For a two story structure not exceeding twenty five feet in height, the requirement's eight. The existing will be two point five one feet to the overhang that's on the side and the rear requirement. There's a typo there. It's not thirty five feet. Well, I guess it is for that, for the the twenty five foot height. It proposes two point four eight feet to the overhang. And it exceeds the maximum height based on the setback, the height variance. A maximum height is ten feet in that current setback and the proposed height on the side is nineteen feet. And the proposed height on the rear setback is twenty two point eight inches. Height setback for accessory structures with setbacks greater than five feet from the property line as follows is maximum height of twenty feet, it should be the proposed height is twenty two feet, eight inches. The applicant's proposing that the second floor may be used as an accessory dwelling unit at some point in the future. It's just noted that the variance will expire in twelve months after the publication of finding the facts. If the accessory structure is not established during that time period, an extension will be needed. They request a consideration under the C one and C two. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to address.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Who is representing, Mr. Kennedy, are you representing the applicant?
Steve, I have a question for Derek, please.
Sure.
If I could just understand. Let's just see. So if it eventually becomes an accessory dwelling unit, there's nothing that requires it to go any anywhere else for variances or zoning?
If you grant the variances and they do it within the next year, they're they're permitted to do that.
Okay.
This is, this is for an accessory dwelling unit, you would probably need a a tub or a shower. It's only got a half bath.
That's, it would need a full bath and some kind of kitchenette.
And some kind of kitchen. But it it wouldn't have to come back here or or any. Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Okay. Mr. Kennedy, are you representing the applicant?
I am, Mr. Chairman, thank you so much, members of the board. My name is Ryan Kennedy from Stevens and Lee. Thank you so much for hearing us tonight. Here with Todd and Bonnie and their architect Brian to talk about putting, as Mr. Bridger said, a second story on their existing detached garage. While Princeton has, it's taken some lengths recently to streamline accessory structures and setbacks. This one is already an existing location that didn't meet any of those things. And just to be clear, the the location is 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 fixed and not moving. We're looking to go up a bit. But the setback requirements get a little bit complicated now because there's Princeton thoughtfully has tried to have relief. For example, a very small shed can be three feet. A one and a half story building can be five feet and then it goes up from there. We, because of the current location at around three feet from the property line, which is, you'll see, consistent with most of the garages in the neighborhood and the desire to not have to relocate it to the center of the yard. We are asking to sit with the existing building, the existing setbacks for a couple of reasons. You'll see some some beautiful landscaping in the back that we would hate to to destroy. It's a very small backyard and relocating it would would make it almost unusable. And then finally, because of the size of these lots and the driveway on the side, it is already a little tricky to get a second car into that garage. So moving into the center of the yard would make it almost impossible to get a car back there. With that, I, if we could swear in our three witnesses, two of them are on the same screen tonight, Bonnie and and Todd are both together.
All righty, and where's your third witness?
Mr. Walker down on my screen, he's down below, but.
I see you both, okay. May I ask all of you then to raise your right hand? You swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful. Mr. Walker, you're muted, so we can't hear you.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Walker, there you go.
Yes.
All right. So Todd and and Bonnie, if you could introduce yourselves to the board and and explain a little bit about what brought you to this house in Princeton and and the need for this space, which is I I unique in my experience, I'll say.
So I'm Todd Reichardt, lived on Pine Street, thirty nine Pine Street for seventeen years. And then with Bonnie, we moved here to twenty four Hawthorne. We've been here almost a decade. And and I I'm a science communicator at Princeton. And Bonnie, what do you do?
I'm the chair of the Lekker Biology Department. I'm a faculty member at Princeton.
And and our approach to, well, we love living in this town, of course. It's, we love living in the town and working, living in the town of Princeton, working at the University of Princeton. The, our approach to the homes that we've had so far here in town are that we see ourselves as stewards of those homes and that we get to live with them for a while and then pass them on to the next to the next generation. And so we feel as though we've been careful and thoughtful in in what we've done with these properties. And 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 we renovated this house top to bottom and made it wonderful and made it, of course, our own. And the only thing yet to to refine is is our garage. It it needs a new roof. And so this was an occasion to think about how we might use that space. And and so for years, for over fifteen years, Bonnie and I have been practiced yoga. But in the past eight months, we've taken on ballroom dance. And turns out that we don't have any good room in the current house where we can roll up enough carpet to to do smooth dancing practice. And so foxtrot and waltz, that sort of thing. So the idea was to create a space above the garage where we could really stretch out. And so that's that's our intent and why we want to do this. Bonnie, further thoughts?
That's our goal. We want to do yoga and waltz, not foxtrot.
Right. Thank you. And at the at the risk of sounding like the the pastor or mayor from the town where Footloose, you're dancing, but it's not, you're not giving lessons to people. You're not playing loud music. This is, this is just you, you two kind of practicing and needing some space to 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 move around.
Nobody would want to stay with us at at this stage of our development.
So with with that, we have a couple of slides, twelve to be exact, one of which says thank you. We get through it pretty quickly. I'd like to have that marked as as our one exhibit this evening. If it's okay to share my screen.
Okay.
So Todd and Bonnie, here, this is your home to the left and that arrow points to your existing garage kind of tucked there behind.
Yes.
All right. Moving to slide two, this is the zoning map and that arrow points to your house kind of in the middle of the block on Hawthorne.
Yes.
All right, so Derek said this is in the R three zone. I I'm noting, because I only noticed it this month, that the zoning maps have been updated recently. And I'll just say, I very much appreciate the the Bs for borough versus the way it used to be presented. So thank you to whomever put those together. Next slide here is a kind of a overview of the neighborhood. Is this is your home here boxed in in blue, right?
Yep.
And if you, everyone can see my cursor, that this is the existing garage that we're talking about on the back corner. I suppose you could see the very similar existing garages to many of your neighbors up and down the street placed kind of kind of right in those back corners. Before we get to these little stars, so we'll talk a little bit about the what what's behind you. You know, it's easy to see what left and right is, but there's a multifamily development right behind you.
There is, yeah, it's five units on the east and the west. And those are, those are rather high, they're forty, that those buildings are forty two feet high behind us.
And the little stars here, those represented, you did a bunch of outreach and hopefully people weren't thinking you were running for council this spring, but you knocked on some doors and talked to folks. And this represents.
Well, their good opinion gave me a sense that maybe I should run for council. And so we we did get, we did get positive assessments from from our neighbors left and right and for neighbors across the street. And then I did meet with the monthly sit and sip of the Richard Court neighbors. And so I think there were five distinct families or properties represented in that conversation. And all of them at the time represented that there was, they had no issue with with our plan.
And you actually went over there and you were kind of standing in the courtyard, looking at plans while everyone had their their monthly coffee, I suppose.
I brought, I brought the architect's plans, the the that big sheet of paper, yeah, sheets of paper, yeah.
And I should maybe also mention there's houses that aren't on the picture that of other neighbors on our street that also are totally fine with it, but they don't have those cars.
And we believe that some of those folk are here tonight with us.
All right, so next slide here, again, all right, this is the street view of your house with showing the garage and then a survey showing where it is on the left.
That's us, yep.
Okay. Let's help the board understand what we're looking at here in terms of your your backyard.
Okay, so on the left hand picture, that's our deck. So the house, you can't see the house, the house would be me in front of that. And then you can see our little backyard, that's like, you're sort of looking, almost like you're looking out of the back of our family room. And then you can see the edge of the garage there on the left, right? So that's our entire backyard.
Got it. And then the right shows.
Oh, sorry. And then the right shows like a little angle, yeah, of almost the whole backyard.
And.
You'd be standing in the driveway there, yeah.
Mature gardens, trees, landscaping. I know you apologize to make the cut some of the things from the front of your house, but you have quite a quite a beautiful garden and put a lot of effort into that.
And then also you can see in the right side image that you can see some window panes from the Richard Court property. And so my point in bringing that up is that there, the the foliage during the summer months very much hides the view both, both ways.
And that's by design. And yet, Ryan, I'm an avid gardener, so the front and the back are loaded up with plants, except the little grass.
All right. Next view here is another view of your existing yard. And I guess you could see behind, kind of looming behind it is the multifamily building kind of adjacent.
Yep, yep.
And then to the right, this is the blue outline kind of of your backyard and your garage. And then while it seems like you you back up to the parking part of the the complex and then just offset a bit is the one of the two buildings. And then I guess the the other two similar mirrored building would be kind of down to the right off screen.
Correct, yes.
All right, so with with that, I'd like to 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 bring up Brian Walker, our architect, Brian. If you want to give the board just a very brief introduction and explain your credentials and role in this project.
First, who needs to be sworn in?
I know, I swore him in at the beginning, Steve, he's sworn in.
Oh, sorry, that's right, okay.
No problem. I've been an architect in New Jersey for over thirty years. I was approached by Todd and Bonnie based on having worked on their, on their old house for a different client. And they were just, as they've already explained, looking to create a additional space for for both working out, dance and whatnot. So it just seemed like the the obvious idea would be to put a second floor on the garage. We tried to we basically were were maintaining all the existing materials, the colors, the roof slope, window patterns, et cetera, to to try and fit into the neighborhood as best we can. And also to to just minimize the impact of of accommodating a second floor.
I guess I'll just ask Mr. Chairman if that's sufficient. I know there's some story in there too, but to have Mr. Walker accepted as an expert.
Yes, I will accept him.
Thank you. All right, as we start going through the plans, then, the next slide here. Ryan, we've got a series of elevations here, some of which are overlaid. So you want to kind of walk us through what we're looking at?
So on the left, you can see the existing south elevation head on. And you know, you can kind of see the the challenge of accommodating a second floor. Obviously, you're 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 going to go straight up. And you can see the result on the right of the existing shaded in blue in the background. There's, there's the extent of additional elevation. And of course, that's the same with the north elevation in in terms of the the difference. And likewise, east and west elevations obviously have some additional height. But you know, the idea is to to, again, tie everything into the existing house. We're sticking with double hung windows. There you have it.
All right. So here's the kind of a vertical cross section here of 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 the structure as an elevation and then the floor plans of the garage and the set the current second floor. And I I think I heard a question initially. You know, about if it were to become an ADU, obviously, some of these features in the back would be need to be converted to a, you know, a full bathroom and kitchen elements, but those would not be installed initially, but could be set up for an ADU in the future. Is that right, Brian?
Yeah, it is. And you can see indicated there broom closet pantry future counter if needed. And the bathroom can expand too. I mean, you you just have to look on a any airplanes at how ingeniously you can accommodate toilet, sink and shower. We probably need to move that wall to the left another three feet. But you know, all those functions can easily be accommodated.
So here we have the front and side elevations on on the left, I guess, as a site sketch to kind of show which directions we're looking at as you approach from from the house and from the you know, interior of the yard to to look at those profiles. And then I guess the same thing here for the rear and the external, you know, the the shared side elevation. And maybe, Brian, you can take a few minutes to talk about the the window treatments. I don't know if there might be some concern with privacy from neighbors, but it seems like there's quite a few, I mean, very few windows and perhaps not even regular windows at that. So that the we're looking at on the on the left here, this is the side that faces the adjacent residential neighbor. And I guess this piece, the north elevation, is the side that faces the multifamily parking area. Is that right?
Correct. And so in in that west elevation, we maintain the existing window. It just helps bring a little light into the garage for coming and going. But up above, you can see the, you know, they're they're basically transom windows to bring light in from that side. But you're you're almost having to go up on your tiptoes. If if you actually want a view out of those windows, they're not they're not so much intended to to look into the neighbor as much as simply bring light in on the backside. And you know, the unfortunate thing sometime with AutoCAD Hatch, it looks like a black window. In fact, it's it's just a frost glass window. You know, Todd and Bonnie will not be able to see out. Nobody's going to be able to see in, but it will bring some natural light in to that side as well.
Got it. Oops. All right. So this slide, it's kind of a blow up of the back of the the yard and the site plan. The arrows showing to the two areas where we have the setback issues. The chart on the right is what Mr. Bridger explained initially, but essentially the existing and proposed from a setback perspective are the same. We are keeping this building in the same place where the variances come from is that we are, you know, expanding a nonconforming use up vertically. So right now, that building is just shy of fourteen feet. Brian, is that correct? And then with the partial second floor, it'd be just under twenty three, twenty two feet, eight inches?
Yes.
And the I I did my best to explain this way that I can understand. I know Mr. Bridger explained it slightly differently. And I'll be honest, I think both ways didn't really do it for me. But ultimately, the setbacks for for the requirements for an accessory building now in Princeton, it's a sliding scale. And we're stuck in a part of the yard that doesn't really fit into any of those because we're less than three feet to the side setback. But had this been a I think a ten by ten shed, we could be three feet from the side setbacks. That's a setback number and a height number in that perspective. If we were less than fifteen feet, that is a relatively new change. We could be five feet from the lot line. Of course, the building is already closer than that. And then if you're less than twenty five feet, there's the almost the full setback requirements for a regular home. And so we're we we looked at this. I we initially looked at this as as side yard setbacks that we are essentially going up and and expanding the use on whether we also noticed it as a height variance possibly, if that's a way to look at it from a from the height perspective. But either way, we are the the plan is to keep this building in the same place, but to add functional usable space for for the homeowners. We believe that it does so in a way that does not negatively affect the neighboring properties. And in fact, for from our perspective, it actually helps screen a very large forty plus foot tall multifamily building near nearby. We did, Brian, maybe it'll be helpful. We 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 thought about this a little bit more today. And I've got a couple of other slides. Maybe we'll we'll just take a quick look at those as well, just so we could see, you know, this Bonnie and Todd, maybe you can help me out here. This picture on the left shows, I guess, a view from that court where you had your meeting with some of the neighbors back. And these are these are Google Street Views kind of through that court back towards your current garage.
Correct.
So the arrow kind of points to where your garage is now.
Correct.
Again, here's that photo that we showed just to show the the connection between where your detached garage is and left and right, the the multifamily buildings. You know, we also just used some software they had to to just, you know, we we didn't have hadn't been thinking this, didn't have the plans, but about forty feet for this building here. And it's about fifteen feet or so from your from that fence line that and then here's a couple of photos. This on the right, this is your neighbor. On one side and then to the left, this is looking back at your driveway, kind of seeing your existing garage here and the that multifamily building kind of behind it that we kind of were hoping to screen a bit.
So Mr. Kennedy, are you, do you want to include these then as part of?
I would. Yeah, we I I guess that makes us twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen pages. Some of these we took today.
Okay, so some of these were taken today in the previous slide, which has a lot of elevation markings. Was that prepared by your architect?
Which
Keep going. No, keep going forward. You had the view of Richard's Court, a photo.
Yes. Now, this is from a commercial software package called Eagle View. It's the subscription that the tax assessor might use to measure things. It's a commercial product.
Okay, so that was prepared by you or your client?
That is correct. That's a subscription. That's something that my my firm pays for. So that's largely our our presentation. This is a a way to hopefully allow a modernization of this homeowner's property in a way that we believe would not be particularly or detrimental to any of the the neighboring properties. It will have the advantage of helping to screen some some large structures from them and itself will be, we believe, very well screened from the neighboring properties, both with the current row of arbivites between the adjacent residential property and the the vegetation behind to the multifamily building and and parking area. The alternative to move it into the center of the yard wouldn't do particularly much other than remove the the open space and the ability to use the yard and and vegetation. And also would make it almost impossible to to get a car and navigate a car back into the center of the yard. You know, the reason why these garages are placed so close to the property lines so that you can have a straight back driveway movement, which which makes it relocating it, you know, despite this being hardship to to rebuild a building and move it almost impossible to get a car back there, you know, a couple of
Oh, sorry. I was just going to mention it with respect to that. I think Mr. Hillier brought up a good point that, you know, if if you're rebuilding an existing foundation, not only are you scrapping the concrete that's already there as an existing foundation, and you're also having to go and and build that additional foundation and in the concrete that requires. The other thing, too, is just to appreciate the fact that when when you look at the aerial view and just appreciate the massing of the garage, it's much closer to that one side of Richard Court. If we said, let's not go with the variance, let's go ahead, move it into the middle of the yard, essentially destroy the backyard, eliminate the garden. It it's actually, it would be, I would think, much less desirable from a Richard Court standpoint, because now you're front and center and kind of moving that mass into a more prominent location. And thus less desirable.
Thank you, Brian.
A quick question for you. The slide that I asked Mr. Kenny about, which he said was prepared with a particular software program. Since you're the architect of record, do you feel this generally depicts what's going on in terms of the height and distances?
Yes, it does. I I think it's pretty accurate. As a point of reference, you can see directly behind the garage is, I think it's approximately a five foot tall. You know, we've referred to it as a fence. It's actually a brick wall that the Richard Court Development Company built on their property. And so if you if you look at, relatively speaking, where the property lines are indicated, I think it's pretty accurate.
Okay, thank you.
I'll just
Yes, it doesn't. Again, that that last slide doesn't represent the twenty two foot height.
No, that was that just just meant to show the surrounding
Okay.
Buildings. Just to quickly to note, you know, the purposes of zoning here. Feel that A, C, G, in terms of open space and locations for appropriate uses, adequate light in open space, appropriate development, the desirable visceral environment. And then J to prevent sprawl here by being able to have a compact development that doesn't eat up the entirety of of the backyard. We we hope you agree that this is not an impactful development, one that could be turned into an ADU, a small likely studio ADU in in the future, well screened in a in a physical location on the site where is it appropriate for a garage that we feel has minimal impact to the surrounding properties. And in fact, maybe that doesn't mirror, but but does help screen or mitigate the impact of some of the much larger surrounding structures from from this home. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I know the presentation, so we'll okay, we'll open this up to the public. Claudia, has anybody indicated a desire to speak on behalf of this application? Oh, Michael, did you have a question?
I'm sorry, Steve. Yeah, we get to ask questions first before you go to the public.
Fine, no problem. Sorry.
Yeah. I guess I I do struggle with this one. There were similar garages that you pointed out, which what makes this special that I should approve adding a new story? If there's a lot of similar garages in the neighborhood, are you basically saying if they all wanted to do second stories and request variances, they all deserve it?
No, certainly all of these, though perhaps some of the neighbors here might might wish I said yes.
Yeah, they might.
But but no. So one, this particular property is is extremely well screened. It backs up to a parking area and is designed in a way that doesn't from a compatibility perspective, it's not doesn't allow for, you know, peering, you know, window placement, for example, promotes and protects privacy. But it's that we're kind of straddling this parking area between two large buildings is actually quite unique. And then the the placement of the driveway and this older home means that you there's not really another place to locate a garage on the site and still be able to have a car get into it without chopping off the back of the house to have a a turning movement. So in those ways, it is it is quite unique, both the the screening, the what's behind it in that it's a parking area. And the the layout of the existing home, not being able to move the building and still have it function as a garage.
Yeah, I I think all the properties, though, could say they don't want to move the building. That would cause the same problems there. Obviously, there's you you say two options. One is build the one where it is with the setback infractions or move it. Well, the third option is not do anything. And I think also, and this is this one is meant to be a question. If it's done and it's a you know, a studio for dancing that's used, you know, whatever, seven hours a week. And it's, I know the answer. If it becomes an ADU, there's a more intensity of use, is it not? Like twenty four seven?
Well, certainly, the 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 ballroom dancing practice area might be the least intense use that could happen, you know, and if there is a you know, it was a question from the zoning officer as we filed it to say, well, that's what you want to do, maybe talk about it now. And we did. And I think it might be a good use in the future, but that's 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 a that is a future thing and not something that they were, you know, actively planning on. And if there is a we'll certainly have to talk about it. But if there's a major difference between those uses and concern about the adjacent properties, certainly something we would consider talking about or or listening to.
Yeah, I I I'm not sure what you mean, talking about it. I think it's it's either a use that we're not approving if we approve it as a dance studio. And you just don't go to a more intensive use. Or maybe yeah, I think that may be an option.
And apologies, when I when I say talk about, I mean, listen to your comment about it and perhaps accept it, you know, tonight, as that that's the back and forth I was
Yeah. And did, does anybody know the year that this built? This was built, that just this precedes zoning? Do you know?
I believe the house was built in nineteen twenty two and
It preceded it. Okay. And I guess this won't be a question either, but Stephen, I, one of the things I do is I look at something and say, if it was a blank slate, would I vote to have it built there with variances? If it came before? Okay. Okay, I'm I'm finished.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments?
I
He
I'm sorry.
Okay, we have a bunch. All right, Donna, would you like to?
Um, the other garages on the street.
The other garages on the street. Any of the other garages have any additions on top or would this be the first?
This, this would be the first. There is one garage um. Across the street and on more that is about the height of what we're hoping to build. But that is a large, um, that's a large storage space above that garage. And that is um, and there's no access except through a sort of either pull down steps. I think it's pulled down steps to get up there. And whereas we want to have to have the full use of the floor.
And you're saying that the. The Richard Court apartments behind you, you've measured them at forty feet. I think that's what Mr. Kennedy said.
Uh depending upon how you how you, where you draw the line, I think, and the precision of those lines in that drawing that um. That Ryan showed you is probably a foot or two. And so it's, it's, it's forty or forty-two feet high, the the buildings behind us, yeah.
And you're proposing twenty-two point eight feet?
I think it's twenty-two feet, maybe eight inches, is that?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. And your home is twenty-eight point seven feet, I think your application says.
Okay. I think that's right.
Um, if this were made into an ADU. Would there, and I'm not sure who this question's for, would there need to be exterior changes as well as interior changes?
I don't, I don't really think there would be uh exterior changes. Um, just just to go back to Mr. Floyd's um point earlier, the intensity of use. I kind of feel that because of the. Trying to maximize the level of privacy, both for those inside and outside. Uh um. The amount of use uh wouldn't be particularly impactful, you you know, I could see it. Uh i- if it, if we were trying to turn this into a modern box with large windows. Um, you you know, with with light emanating and being able to see people easily. Uh it it's not really the case in in this instance.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Uh, yes, Eve.
If this uh were to become uh. Used as an accessory dwelling unit, does that um require change in provided parking? For the property?
A, assuming, uh, because it's such a small space, a, it would never be a two bedroom ADU. A a one bedroom would not increase um the parking requirement. Uh a studio or one bedroom does not have its own independent parking requirement. Um I'll also note, though, that I think we we do like Mr. Floyd's comment that that if there is a concern with that. Uh, I think the applicant would be certainly willing to stipulate to that. You know, that would it have to be a another variance or something coming forward if uh if that is a a concern? You know, we we raised it because it seemed like it might be a good thing in the future to to mention and and set up for. But uh not something that they're uh they're tied to, if that's the concern.
Indeed, that's not our, that is absolutely not our present need. Um, we 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 were led to believe that. That going down the ADU path might be to our advantage or to the to the advantage of the community. But uh but if if not, then we we're happy to abandon that.
We have no plans to use it as an ADU.
George, have a question.
Yes, George. I have a question perhaps from Mr. Bridger. Um, was there a variance for that multi-family unit behind this property, a height variance?
It it's. Sure, there were numerous variances at the time it was done. It was a site plan, and I'm not sure. I think it was done in the eighties, but I. But it was above what the height requirement would. Uh, it's hard to say because the height has definition has changed. The height at that point was measured to the median point of a roof. So it could have been thirty-five feet if it's at forty now, so um it didn't have height to setback ratios. Um, I don't know the exact setbacks, but it looks pretty close to what the attached dwelling requirements are. But there would have been some variance because I think it's in the R three zone and you need a minimum of three acres to do attached dwelling.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, sir.
Um, any other questions?
I would, I would just a quick question. What is the square footage of the garage and what is the square footage of the addition?
So it's the the garage is twenty by twenty, the addition will be twenty-three by twenty.
Right. And you use a garage now for your cars?
We do.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, um, Mr. Kennedy will open this up to the public. Do you want to say anything first?
Uh, thank you. Those are, these are excellent thoughts and questions from from the board. Um, and you know, while it might be a good spot for an ADU, um, uh, the applicant certainly is willing to stipulate that that's uh perhaps uh not part of this picture.
Okay. Okay, um, we'll open this up to the public now. Claudia, has anybody indicated they'd like to speak on this application?
Yes.
Okay.
Have one, two, three, see the hands up on the top.
I see, okay. Please bring someone in.
Ms. Thompson, do you want to unmute yourself?
Yes, I am unmuted, I believe.
Ms. Thompson, just need your address and then we'll swear you in.
Yes, I live at thirty-eight Hawthorne Avenue. That's about um four houses down from Bonnie and Todd and kind of catty.
Okay, and do you swear or affirm that your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, it will.
Thank you.
Um, just just to comment, I I approve the plan. I I have no problems with it. Um. I can also point out, i- it it sounded like there was a concern on the part of Mr. Floyd. That maybe this would start a chain reaction and suddenly everyone on the street would want to do this. I don't even have electricity in my garage. All I want is electricity so that I can get an automatic door opener. Uh, I have no plans to build up, to expand, to to put plumbing or anything there. Um, so at least for, I can only speak for my house, but this certainly is not gonna um. Uh, it it sort of incite me to take on a similar kind of project. I I appreciate the fact that with respect to the windows, their placement and the use of frosted glass in the back. Um, the uh the owners, Bonnie and Todd, are very attuned to maintaining kind of visual privacy. Both for themselves in there, but also for for the neighbors on the outside and what they would see or what they would know. You know, the people inside that extension wouldn't be able to see. I think that's a very sort of uh neighborhood friendly approach to the design that they've come up with. Our garages are packed into these rear corners of of our property. Uh, the idea of picking it up and moving it and putting it somewhere else is crazy to me. And or or tearing this one down and building a new one would just be so wasteful. I can't imagine even, you know, proposing doing that. Um, and as someone who lives kind of catty cornered from the same end of the other row in the Richard Court buildings. Um, I know some of the people who live there, they're they're wonderful neighbors. That was there when I bought my house. So, you know, that was a sort of a fact of life. But, you know, that that end unit looms over our houses on Hawthorne Avenue. And uh, you know, you can see lots of windows on that wall. They can look down into my yard. Um, uh, I'm not complaining about that fact, that's just the way it is. Uh, but I think that what Bonnie and Todd are proposing is nowhere near as sort of is the the same scale. Of of that interaction between two properties. I think we're on the low side, even with this addition. Their garage is still going to be on the low side of who's looking down on or overlooking who. So um, that's all that I would say. I'd certainly be happy to answer any questions anyone might have of just another neighbor in a. Sort of similar situation, a few houses down, but otherwise, um, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you very much. Board members, any questions? Yes, Donna, did you raise your hand? Are you just waving a pencil? Okay, um, you're muted, but, okay, Claudia, can you let the next uh person in?
Nancy H, can you unmute yourself?
Hi, I live, I'm Nancy Hartog, and I live at nineteen Richard Court.
Ma'am, we're just gonna swear you in. Do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, and I appreciate um what's been said, and it's altered a bit my opinions. Um, I do take issue with how Richard Court was characterized by uh Attorney Kennedy. Um, we are a set of ten townhouses. They were built in the eighties. And uh, you know, I'm sure there were approvals at that time. I can understand it's very high and. And that there is some issue about them looming over people on Hawthorne. Um. I would also take issue with that it is just a parking lot. Uh, if you come and look, there are a lot of gardens that are beautifully maintained with, you know, seasonal changes all the time. Also, where we live on Houghton Street faces Princeton High School. Um, there is one other residence next going um south, I believe. I although the directions that we were told tonight do not go here with my understanding of north, south, east and west in Princeton. Um, I realize this all sounds a bit defensive. However, I'm trying to give you a picture. Um, our street is not, so there's one other house that's quite tall that belongs to one of our council people. A councilwoman, um. I, and I, I lived on State Road for thirty years. We built a garage extension very similar to what Todd and Bonnie are suggesting for personal use. I would argue that it would be inappropriate to approve this for an accessory unit, even though I'm a great believer in things like that. And higher density when it feasible and aesthetically pleasing in Princeton. Um, I think an exterior staircase is inappropriate for an accessible dwelling. That's speaking as an elderly person, but and and some young person can go up and down icy steps in the wintertime. But, okay, that's where I'm coming from. But again, I do take issue. We are townhouses. We're not apartment buildings. Um, it's, I think everybody keeps their places very nice. If there's an issue on screening, then we should be planting more trees. Um, I do believe, I if I have a question in terms of the um proposed. Project, and that is, is it true that the the elevation facing Richard Court? Has that round frosted glass window? Okay. Um. Hmm, I I I mean, that may be just a matter of aesthetics. I wish you guys could be a little further back. I realized from your side on Ho- Hawthorne, we probably, again, loom large. Um, I question the kind of eye window, that's all. Um, and the possibility, and I'm a gardener, or was a gardener rather, and I understand, you know. I I don't know. I just wish it were a little further back, like your second story could be further back. Keep the, and I know you've got your plans and all that, so never mind. Um, I just would like it to be as as aesthetic as possible facing Richard Court, which is a courtyard. Yes, there are cars parked there, but there are lots of gardens and it's people's living space. Um, and again, I urge anyone who's on the council to drive by. It's not really in keeping. I agree with most of what's built in Princeton. I think it's marvelous that it's here. And I, you know. We we occupy little ground space, but we have a lot of living space. So I don't know what you can take from my my report, but um I am concerned about the accessory. As as it is now, um, using it that way. Thanks for letting me.
You're welcome. Okay, Claudia, can you bring in the next person, please?
Um, Ms. Bao?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can hear you. We just need your address, please, and then we'll swear you in.
Sure, uh, my last name is Gao, J A O, first name is Yan, Y A N, and I'm a resident at twenty-one Richard Court.
Alrighty, and we're just gonna swear you in. Do you swear or affirm that your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, first of all, I want to thank everybody for taking the time for this public hearing. And I I just read the mails this morning, so I'm not like fully prepared. So I'm gonna, I'm I'm trying to provide as much feedback as I can. Um, uh, first of all, I I want to point out, like, Mr. Kennedy, like, uh. Your uh presentation of uh our Richard Court is a little bit misleading. Uh, Richard Court is a very close type, a close community of ten families. As the courtyard is not a parking lot. It has many of the beautiful landscaping that has won various awards. And this morning, we donated a lot of plant to nonprofit organizations for fundraising. And also in this court, we have multiple childrens. We have children arranged from age uh age four to age eighteen. And currently, I think there are one, two, three, four, five, five school age children in this courtyard. We use the courtyard to as as a a a open space for our kids. You know, they 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 play both in the courtyard and during the pandemic. You know, the the sunshine, the open air in this court provides a great relief for my kids. And, you know, during the pandemic, these kids have have a lot of mental issues. And this is open space with green, this open green space provided a lot of comfort for them. So, um, um, and so I want to say that, first of all, this is not a parking lot. It's our outdoor living space. It's uh that belongs to our whole community. And it's heavily being utilized by children in the community. And the second of all, I want to say, like, the pictures that you have presented uh for our courtyard, looking into the garage is already outdated. I think in the last year, in the la- last year or or two years ago, we had to remove several torches. Because we were afraid that the branches is gonna hit on the roof of the of the garages in our neighbors. So we removed those trees, but a- at the same time, right now, we we want, we don't have the same kind of privacy as before. But we still can live by or live with it because we see the, we see the rooftop of the garage. Uh, it, but if you are adding a second floor onto the gra- onto the garage, that that's gonna completely change the landscape that we see. Uh, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna share my screen, which I take, I took a picture this evening. So can you see my screen?
Yeah. That's for we.
Already, yeah.
Yes.
Yes, so this is currently how the garage looks, the garages look like from our courtyard. So when I purchased this property four years ago, there are greens there, you know, growing up. Like going up like above above the wall, a little bit above the wall, so it's nice. Uh, so it's nice greens, uh, green thing. But because we had to remove it due to all the hurricanes, that's kind of stuff. So right now, it's it's open. And if there is another. Another floor built upon these walls, then you can see, like, it completely changed the appearance of our court. And now we are gonna feel that we are completely walled in by by these additional. Uh, by additional structures on top on these heights. So. This this is what I want to point out, because even if we grow some tree here, it's not, it's not gonna grow up to a height. To provide us any uh with any privacy in in. in at least like five to six years, I'm guessing. And also, when we grow this, we need to be considerate of our neighbors' structure as well because we need to consider, okay, is it gonna fall on their property when a hurricane comes? So yeah, so this is two things I want to point out. This is how, you know, the garage presents in relative to our, to Richard Court. So my first, my objection, like first point is it affects our privacy, right? And also, if you build a second floor and add windows, bathroom, water, sewer line, heating, external staircase, it just set a precedence for all the neighboring houses. And it will attract the buyers to use, to expend on all of their garages and use this space as an apartment or Airbnb. My concern is if both garages, there are actually four garages behind the Richard Court. If all of them set up a structure like this, you know, it's gonna greatly affect like the safety and the privacy of all our neighbors. And my second point is, by this additional structure, like going up, it's gonna block the sunlight and airflow we currently have in my house. And the fact is, the distance from the garage to the main structure of 24 Hawthorne Drive, Hawthorne Avenue, it's probably larger than the distance from the garage to my garage. So, I mean, during the pandemic, I always open my garage door and my front door and I let the sun from the south to shine into our garage and our house because it's a good way for us to keep our house ventilated and disinfected. And, but if there is additional, if the structure is gonna be increased in height, it's gonna block a lot of the airflow and the sunshine that we got regularly. And also, for all the plants that we planted in the courtyard, the sunshine for them will be blocked as well. And the last point that I want to make is, it will, I think it will greatly affect the resale value of our property. Because our Richard Court is already a high-density residential area. Because the five house in a row, is the lot size is about the same. I think it may be a little bit bigger than 24 Hawthorne. But then on a similar lot, we have five townhouses and we pay a total of like at least eighty-five K a year in property tax. So, and also because our court is situated right in front of the high school, we have to bear with a lot of high-volume traffic every day, including a lot of trespassing traffic in the morning. You know, because as neighbor, we felt that we already, we are enduring a lot of inconvenience, but some of them may be harder to prevent. But we hope, you know, but by having this additional structure in place, I'm afraid it's gonna just affect our property value, resale value. I mean, I'm a working parent and I cannot afford a single family home with open space for my own children. So the four of us have to live in a three-bedroom townhouse that's spread across four floors, and I'm climbing up and down and every day. And I just cannot afford more space. So, but we have to save up for our kids' college education. Because we, I mean, if I have, if my property value goes down, I mean, it's just additional financial burden to us. We have two school-aged kids that we are trying to, we are trying to raise here. So, I'm hoping, I understand our neighbors' need to have additional space for the, you know, yoga and the dance purpose. In this case, I would suggest you, like, look into our neighbors at 126 and 130 Moore Street. I've actually seen this house just went through an addition phase. They have a similar lot, maybe smaller lot. But, and they also have a long driveway leading to their garage. But they did a nice addition on the first floor at the back of their main property. I think that is a better solution. It will increase the value of the property itself. And also for you to add all the electricity, heating, cooling, water line, it's just cheaper to connect from the main house. And, you know, and also, you know, New Jersey has such a long, cold, wet winter. Why do you want to have a, why do you want to climb an exterior staircase for a garage? You know, that's, that's what I'm suggesting. I think there are better alternatives right there. We can look at how our neighbors in the neighborhood is doing it. And there should, there are mutually beneficial solutions to this.
Ma'am?
Thank you for the time.
Ma'am, quick question for you. The photo that you just shared with us, did you take that photo yourself today?
Yes.
Okay, so what we will do is we will identify that as your exhibit, objector exhibit number one. Is that okay?
Okay, yeah, sure, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, Claudia, is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Claudia?
Trying to move them over.
Okay, thank you. Is that, is it Ms. Kudra Miller? Is that it?
Ms. Miller?
Miller, yes. Can you please unmute yourself and activate your video?
Okay, I'm trying to do. Okay. Did I do that?
No, we can't see you. We can hear you.
Okay.
Okay, there you go. Thank you.
Yes.
Could you give us your address, please?
Yes, 28 Hawthorne Avenue, Princeton, New Jersey.
And do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Well, I'm a neighbor of Bonnie and Todd. And I'm very excited about the prospect of them having a beautiful dance studio that they need. And I think that they're being very conscientious as neighbors with a beautiful design. And I think they've taken into consideration the courtyard behind them. And I take a little bit of offense that it's appearing as though we're not being very considerate neighbors because I think we are. And I've lived in Princeton thirty years and everyone is very friendly and very cordial to each other. And we try to be very sensitive about our environment. And I think Bonnie and Todd are doing a very good job with their architect in creating something that they need as a space. And space is very important in Princeton and very expensive. And I think we're trying to be very conscious as neighbors. And I think they've presented a beautifully environmentally sensitive addition to their garage. That's what I like to say.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Claudia, is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
Someone nearby, then last name H-U-A-N?
H-U-A-N, yes. Can you, I'm sorry, I don't know if it's male or female, but can you please unmute yourself and activate your video? It's either Ms. or Mr. Yuan. If you'd like to speak, can you please unmute yourself and activate your video? Let's see what happened. Did they, did they disappear? I think they disappeared, so I'll assume that they don't want to speak. Okay, anyone else, Claudia?
There are no more hands.
No more hands. Okay, we'll give it a second here. Okay, we'll close the public portion of the hearing. And again, Mr. Kennedy, do you want to say anything before we go into executive session?
Sure, thank you. Appreciate a lot of, actually really good comments that we just heard. Particularly, I want to make it clear, as far as stipulations go, you know, we had talked about the ADU. We are perfectly fine, and that's not really what they were looking to do. Just wanted to kind of think about what could be done in the future, but we're hearing that that may not be the best thing to see here. So we are, you know, whether you want to call it withdrawing, talking about that, or agreeing to a condition that we not do that. That's not something that the property owner is frankly looking to do. We heard the concern. We were happy to part ways with that piece of it. I've heard a lot about privacy, and I think there could be some concerns there with windows that overlook areas that are being used. And, you know, with apologies, I was certainly, we meant no disrespect about the, I'll say, quite lovely development and townhouses next door. I myself walked by today and I believe that the, you know, the gardens there are quite lovely and really just meant to show the context and the relationship between the buildings, the setbacks and the heights, the twenty-two feet and the much, you know, the forty-foot height of the adjacent project in terms of compatibility and other factors in the neighborhood. But in terms of privacy, I think great care has been taken. And we would certainly take further comments or direction on making sure that this new addition to the structure, you know, while not nearly the same height as the adjacent one, you know, with windows to perhaps look down on areas that people are using, was carefully designed on one side with just light gathering windows along the top of the residential, single-family home side on Hawthorne. And then with a frosted round window, just to allow some light in the back and to alleviate those privacy concerns. We certainly would be amenable, because I think we'd heard a comment the other way, perhaps from another court owner that maybe thought a different type of window might be better. We think that the smaller one, for privacy reasons, makes sense. And we heard privacy is a concern, but we would certainly be willing to consider other treatments there to make it clear that, you know, privacy's not, not gonna be a, shouldn't be a concern. In fact, this may even add to privacy since it would keep, you know, some of the views into the yard of Bonnie and Todd's screened slightly more from the adjacent project. So I really appreciate the, I'll say, conversation. I don't mean that this was some kind of back and forth, but the thoughts and comments that came out of this and hope that with those restrictions or alterations, the would be amenable to allowing them to add this small amount of space to their existing home. You know, unfortunately, the idea of building an addition into the side kind of is akin to moving it, you know, that really would remove and pave, but, you know, develop the entirety of the open space. And we certainly heard tonight the importance, you know, from neighbors and everyone of those open spaces. And that goes to both sides of that fence, that, you know, some usable backyard and the way that the court is used certainly are important. And one of the other reasons why we're not, we're trying to not take it up with unnecessary building when it could be done more efficiently on top. So certainly appreciative of your time, and if there's any other questions, we'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's go into executive session. And board members, are there any questions or comments related to this application? Well, I'll make an opening remark here. I, I'm concerned about visually how this appears from the apartments or the condominiums in the back. It's twenty-two feet high and it's very close to the property line. I don't have a problem with the round window in there. I think that's just, just to create some muted light inside. But I mean, I'm concerned about its proximity to the property line.
I had a question for Derek, really as a clarification. Earlier tonight, I thought you testified that the applicant, if they chose in the future or new owner or something would like to do an ADU, they would not have to come back, given the variances if the board approves them tonight. Is that correct?
No. My concern was if an ADU was involved in this application, it would need to be installed within the next, while the zoning variance was still in effect.
No, no, I understand that, but what I'm, what I'm trying to say is...
It would be an intensification of the, you know, unless the board... I would make somebody come back for an ADU. Feel pretty different.
I think I'm, I'm missing something then. So if the variances are granted tonight and the applicant came back in less than a year and said, well, you know, we thought about it some more, have a relative or something, a parent, and they would like to use this as an ADU, do they have to come back to the board for further variance approval or any other approvals, or could they do that?
It was just approved as a dance studio. The approval is specific to what's approved tonight. So if you don't approve an ADU tonight, then they'd have to come back for an ADU.
Okay, thank you.
Question is your comments?
I, I just wanted to clarify that when I, and it sounds like it's not as germane as it might have been before, but I, when I asked about the parking relative to if it became an ADU, it was just a point of information. I, it wasn't an expression of being against it being an ADU. And I probably don't have the ability to visualize the difference that an architect like our chairman does. It doesn't strike me as being a, it's, as I, it seems to me that it, I mean, it is shorter than those other buildings. It is close to the property line. But I feel, I guess I feel positively inclined towards this proposal.
Thank you.
I agree. I have a quick question. Ryan, I didn't see any drawings of heating or air conditioning. Will the unit be heated and air conditioned?
I'll yield to Mr. Walker on that one. I believe so, but, yep, there's not any.
Yeah, we were talking about probably radiant floor heat as being the most efficient. There'll probably be a ceiling fan to minimize the amount of air conditioning needed.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead, Steve.
I was gonna ask, would you have an outside condensing unit for your air conditioning?
Yeah, and that would probably go essentially, not that there's really an under a stair in a spiral, but generally in that location.
Yes, I mean, there's no room to do it in there, you know.
Yeah, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be in a location that would have any zoning implications.
Thank you.
I agree with Eve. You know, I think it is obviously close to the property line. But I do believe that given what's behind it, it is a shading. It just seems like a nice addition to the property, useful, so.
I agree with...
I agree with Steve and Eve.
Any other comments, or would someone like to make a motion?
And when the motion is made, if the mover could identify whether they believe it's a C1 or a C2 or both?
If, if you may, I'll, I'll suggest with the, for the motion, perhaps C2, um, because of the, the, the planning reasons that were kind of noted, that, uh, um, this is better than moving to the front of, uh, to the center of the yard, for example.
Well, is that, is that a, is that a positive criteria? I mean, is that the fact that it's better than in the center of the yard, is that justification under a C2? Because then basically you're saying it's going to conform to the ordinance.
Let's say that it has, that is, there's without substantial detriment to the public good, uh, and it doesn't substantially impair the intent of purchase of the, of the, of the zone plan for the, uh, reasons J, I, A, C, and, and, and G.
Okay. Okay. I, I would move that we approve if, um, if we're in agreement that it's a, I'll, I'll accept that it's a C2 if, if, uh, Casey agrees and Chairman.
Thank you.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion of the motion? Okay, if there is none, Claudia, can you please call a roll?
Oh, wait, wait, one clarification, um, well, I guess based on Mr. Bridger's position that this approval, which, I guess that is a question, the approval is limited tonight for use as a yoga slash dance studio for the personal use of the applicant. And that if in the future they want to make another use of it, including an ADU, they would have to return to the board. Am I summarizing it correctly, Derek, what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Do, do we want to specifically say yoga or dance studio, what if they choose to use it as a study and not dance? Or use it for yoga? I mean, do we just want to-
Studio.
Excuse me?
It, as an art studio or, you know, just can't be what we have, time-habitable space.
Oh, no, no, can't, I agree with that, it can't be a living unit. But it, it could be something other than we're, uh, I think, calling it specifically a dance studio for their personal use or a use of it for yoga is basically like a den in a house. So it's just basically, it's just basically habitable space, but not a standalone living unit. I mean, we, they're putting in, they're putting in a full bathroom. So you're basically saying if somebody choose, if, if they choose to use it for their own personal use and sleep in it, is that a problem?
I think we're going down a slippery slope, it's either an ADU, right, right now with a half bath.
It can't be, it can't be in an ADU. Okay, so they can't use it for sleeping, or, I, I want to say living purposes, but they can use it for other than, uh, sleeping. It could be any residential use that, uh, you'd use in a single-family home, but you can't sleep there. Or use it as a guest, guesthouse, or a guest room.
Okay, but then, well, I, I, I guess I agree with Derek, because if you're going to use it as a guest room.
It's a residential use.
It is, or a mini apartment or whatever, then that's what it is then. And so that's why I asked if three years from now they sell their home and somebody else moves in and they say, well, I, I think I meet the requirements for an ADU. I got those variances before, I don't need any variance for parking. That's why I asked, so then why couldn't they use it as an ADU? So, the, the further and further we go talking about, well, it's kind of living space, but it isn't, and it's, um, kind of an apartment, but it's not, and it's a guest room, I'm, I'm not seeing then, uh, why it would be a problem for it simply to be used as an ADU then. So that's why I was pressing Derek, because I was trying to figure that out.
Now, my only, my only, the purpose of my question is just to approve it as a yoga studio or a dance studio specifically, as opposed to, uh, because again, those are two specific uses, and if you're saying if it's used for anything else, they'd have to come back in. I, I, I agree, it shouldn't be for sleeping or, or a guest room for overnight guests or anything like that, I agree with that.
Well, I mean, I-
Just, just call it a studio. I mean, it's an art studio, it's, uh, it could be a study, you know, they could, they could read a book up there if they wanted to, I mean, yeah, no, but it's, they can't live there. Can't sleep there, they can't cook there. So why not just call it a studio?
Studio is fine.
It's not a studio apartment, it's just a studio. Karen?
Um, Derek? Is that something you can enforce or? I, I mean, I don't, you wouldn't know anyway, but, you know, I mean, it's, it's, would not be something obvious, so.
I'm not worried about the, I think the current owners have given enough testimony, it's not going to be a problem with them, it's when the property sells.
Correct.
I would just, a studio is fine if you've added, uh, that it shall not be habitable space where people sleep overnight.
Sure.
Okay. And that any, any change in the use then has to come back to the board, or?
Yes, I, I believe, if we're conditioning on that, I think it would.
Okay.
Or if they want to make it an ADU, they have to come back to the board.
Okay, so I'm, uh, Eve, you made the motion. So are you comfortable amending your motion to reflect the, uh, condition that we just discussed?
I, yes, I, 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 I guess so, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Any more discussion on the motion? Okay, so, do you just want to repeat it, Karen, before we vote?
Um, yes, there is a motion on the floor to prove this as a C2 variance of, for the studio for personal use and not as an habitable space for, uh, sleeping. And that should the use be changed for the future or, uh, the owner wishes to use it as an ADU, they would need to return to the board, uh, for further, uh, consideration. Does that sound, um, to everyone's liking?
I think the reason I hesitated is partly, this is not going to sound very legalistic, but I, the, it seems a little funny to say that you would say no to a place where someone would be sleeping, because it seems like it would be the least disruptive of anything. And I don't know why, I, I, I would, I don't know why, not that they're saying they want this, but I don't know why that couldn't be seen as a, and a, like, like a guest room, for example, they're not saying that's what they want. And, and seem, I, I guess all I'm wondering about, I guess the problem is it, when it's no longer their house, what that-
I, I, my, my understanding from the testimony you heard tonight was that there were concerns expressed that this space now could have a more intensive use, meaning, you know, I guess everybody's concerned about things like Airbnb or some kind of, um, long-term use as, and it would call a mini apartment or something like that. So, right now, I believe the applicant said they would put, want to put a half bath. Uh,
Right.
Somebody wanted to add a shower to it. I mean, Derek, other than getting a, um, permit, somebody could do that probably, right?
They, they would probably request zoning approval, construction department.
So, I mean, uh, Eve, I understand your point, I guess it could just be that, well, the concern is it is space for sleeping, uh, you know, how does everybody else feel? But, uh, we, we can, we can tinker with the language a little bit more, but.
It just becomes a slippery slope if you get into creating a sleeping room, then it's an ADU. If it does become an ADU, they need separate utilities and it just creates a whole can of worms, um, you know, that could deal with.
And it doesn't seem that the applicants are, are looking for that, so I don't know why I would be going that way, other than just logic, but, um, but I see the slippery slope, we don't really want any slippery slopes there.
Okay. Any other, just, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Did somebody second that motion?
Yes.
I did. This, Harlan.
Oh, Harlan, okay.
Okay, um, if there's no other discussion, Claudia, can you call a roll?
Austin? Yes. David?
Yes.
Floyd?
No.
Mrs. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
No.
Well, the, uh, the application's approved.
Thank you, thank you so much, uh, was a particularly, uh, helpful conversation and, and, and comments particularly about the, the ADU, and, uh, much appreciated, uh, for your time tonight, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for-
Thank you.
And thinking it through with us, we appreciate it. Thanks for your service.
No problem.
And thank you.
Okay. Our last hearing of the night is, uh, case number Z29 dash 336, uh, 49 Pardo Road Block 6820 Lot 13 in the R5 Zone. Karen, is the paperwork in order?
It is, the notice thing is in order, the board has jurisdiction tonight.
Derek, can you summarize your memo, please?
Thank you, Chairman. Um, Diva Kunto and Veronica White are seeking a C1 variance, permit the construction of a new attached one-car garage in exception to the required fifteen-foot side yard setback and the required sixteen-foot setback from the nearest portion of the facade applicable to front-facing garages. Property is located within the R5 Zone in the former Princeton Township. The subject lot and property are complying with respect to the applicable bulk regulations. The applicant is proposing to divert the existing garage to a dining room. Um, a small addition will be added to the front of the existing garage to create a approximately one hundred fifty-six square foot study. And a new, uh, six hundred and sixty square foot master suite level is proposed over the new dining room. These improvements, uh, are permitted as a right, but the new one-car attached garage, uh, that is proposed does require a side yard variance on the right side yard, the requirement is fifteen, and the proposal will be ten point four two feet. And as we know, front-facing garages must be set back sixteen feet from the nearest portion of the front facade. Um, the proposed setback here is four point six four feet. They've requested consideration under the C1 criteria. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to address.
Yes, I have no question, excuse me, board members. Um, can we take just a two-minute recess here?
Yes.
Sure. I'm sorry, sorry to do that, but, um, if we can just take two minutes, that would be helpful. Thank you. Hey, so as George comes back, we'll resume. Hi, Harlan, are you, are you there now? Harlan, are you back? Did you ever leave?
I am back now, sorry about that.
Okay, no, it's quite right, I can't see your face, so I didn't know. Okay, we're going to resume our hearing on 49 Pardo. Um, okay, we heard Mr. Bridger's opening statement, um, who is going to present on behalf of this application?
Uh, good evening, it's, uh, my name is Stephen Akuto, and this is my wife Veronica. I work here with, uh, Pat and Kyle, uh, who are architects, and we'll be presenting together.
Okay, very good.
Why don't we swear, why don't we swear you win then? Um, Mr. Akuntel and Ms. White, um, you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful.
I do.
I do.
All right, and then you said you have your architects, is that?
Yeah.
Uh, Van Dyke.
Okay. All right, and we'll swear you in too, now, you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so, please begin.
Good evening, my name is Veronica, I grew up in Princeton, um, and then after some years in New York, Stephen and I moved, uh, back to Princeton in two thousand and sixteen. Um, I work at the art museum on campus, and we have two young boys who are, uh, growing up in Princeton and really enjoy playing in the backyard together.
I grew up in New York and, and, uh, I've been, uh, coming to Princeton for more than twenty years to visit in-laws and friends, and, um, certainly have fallen in love with the place. Um, and we, we bought our current home from Manpardo in two thousand and eighteen. Um, and we, uh, are proposing, as, as, as Mr. Bridger said, the, the, expanding our home, and, uh, we'd like to expand it to include more, uh, we'd like to expand it to include more interior work and living space and to accommodate our growing sons and their additional space needs and to modernize some of the home. We're applying for the two variances for the side yard setback and the garage setback. The plans we put together, we think, take into account a combination of factors, including being sensitive to the greenery, to using the existing footprint as much as we are able to, and to also retain the value of the home by having a one-car garage in the future, and if we're able to do that. We're trying to minimize the disturbances on the site. And, you know, one of the great things about the home when we bought it, there wasn't, there weren't a lot of places available at the time. And our home had a lot of expansion capability within the confines of what it allowed, especially to go do some vertical work without changing the visuals too much. So, our architects, Kyle and Pat, are here with us to, we can walk through the drawings together, and of course, happy to answer any questions. So, I'll pause there, and we can go to the next step or look at the drawings together if you would like.
Well, why don't we do, since you don't have a lawyer with you tonight, perhaps we could get your architects to put their qualifications on the record, since you're both architects of record?
Yep. I'm Kyle Van Dyke, been an architect for forty, forty years, license number ten eight sixty-four in New Jersey. I have New Jersey license, Pennsylvania license, Massachusetts license, and, but we do most of our work around within fifty miles of Princeton.
Okay.
I'm Pat Totaro, partner and owner with Kyle Van Dyke, and been a practicing project architect for about thirty, thirty-plus years, thirty-five years in the Princeton area. And we've been in business together for twenty.
And you're a registered architect as well?
No, I am not.
Okay. All right. And Mr. Van Dyke, you are in fact registered. I have you by about three thousand numbers on your on your, I'm practicing a little longer. Okay, I think we'll accept you as the architect of record and Ms. Totaro as working with you. Okay, please continue.
I'm not sure how this goes, but Steve, do you have control of the visuals?
I can present, or I think you might be able to present.
Can I? If I can present, it'd be great. If I can share the screen. Is there a screen share or something?
Yeah.
Can you guys see that?
Yes, we do.
Mr. Van Dyke, before you begin, so why don't we, are you going to have a series of slides? Because then we can collectively call them.
Well, whatever we sent with you is, is there Z zero?
It's about four sheets.
Whatever you guys have in front of you is what we have.
Okay, then we'll just collectively say these four sheets are your exhibit A one. Thank you.
Right. And can I zoom in here?
You should be able to, I think.
Trying to zoom. Hold on a second. Anyway. So, this site plan is a site plan. The yellow is the existing house, and the setback is fifteen feet off the edge of this property line. What we're doing for Steve and Veronica is putting in addition within that, we want to try to stay within the confines of the envelope of the house. It's a split-level house, so we're actually, this area right in here is a one-story area, and we're going to be going and putting a master bedroom, bathroom, and this little study up on top that goes right over top of that. So, we're staying within the same footprint. We're pushing out, this is the existing, this is the new. We're pushing out a little bit over here to the front to give more entry room and study room for home offices. And what we did is we're taking the garage, which is right here, right in here, right now, we're taking it and making a dining room, because they have a very small dining room, and they have a growing family, so we want to make a dining room. So, we're using the existing garage as a new dining room space. Now, with that, we, Steve originally wanted to have a two-car garage, and we were thinking we might be able to use the front yard here of the area to put some more garage space. But when we started, you know, getting involved with the zoning in Princeton, we found that pretty quickly that it would be very difficult to do that. Plus, it has, because we have, there's, the lot itself is on one side, it has a mountain road through here, and so we have two front yard setbacks off of Pardo and Mountain Road, so it takes a lot out of that property. And so, not being able to really do anything up in front here, we thought about taking the garage. We wanted to put, after we took the garage out for the dining room, we wanted to basically be able to have still one-car garage at least. And so, we thought about putting it in the back, and we thought about driveways going to the back and maybe pushing it back farther. But the reality is that this little piece here is a nice sunroom, or it's a screened-in porch, actually, which gets great ventilation on both sides, and this backyard is awesome, because it's
mature trees.
It's got mature trees. It's just a really nice spot, so we didn't want to really go back. If we brought the garage back a little bit, it would be invasive to the air, you know, circulation, and also some sun and views. So, the minimal thing to do would be to go off the side here, which brings us four feet within the setback. And so, that's what one of our variances is to stay, is to a side yard setback. The other part to it of it was looking back in here is because we, after reviewing the zoning codes and seeing where you would like to have garages, you know, they want to be sixteen foot from the nearest face of the house back, and/or they can be in the backyard here. But again, that created more coverage issues and retention issues and costs and things like that, so disturbances to the site. So, what we decided to do was to go off to the side. And the main thing there, and I'll go to the next slide, which is Z one, is this is the existing front face, so the garage is already in the front where it is now. There's an entry door here, and this is the face to the main house. What we are going to do is going to put the bedroom over top of this. We're not going past the top of the house. And we want to put a garage out in this area here, which is only about ten or twelve feet, ten or eleven feet, I think.
Eleven feet.
Eleven feet.
From this.
Right. So, this is the existing here, and I can't zoom in here. I don't want to zoom. That's it.
Close that and see what that does.
Oh, there it is. So, so, so here is the front of the house now, and so we have a garage that's already within, you know, ten feet of the front face. We have an entryway, and then this is the house. And what we, and this is the back porch, which is very nice porch. It's got ventilation on three sides. It got great views to the back, and this is the back of the house. So, this is the garage, there's a chimney here. And so, in our design, is what we want to do is to scroll up. Excuse me. Right, so. Oops. So, what we're going to do is is this, the darker parts are the additions to the house. So, in the front, there's a big porch in the front, and so what we're doing is we're taking part of that porch, and we're using it as entryway closets and things. It's a very small entryway right now. We're putting a small study off it. This was the existing garage right now. We would like to make a dining room with a small study out the front. And then we put the new garage over to this side of the house, so that we can still have a garage. And this is the setback line, so we're about four feet off into the setback, plus or minus.
And that garage is still accessible from the existing driveway with minimal extension to it.
Yeah. We tried to create a situation where we wouldn't have too much impact on the site. So, in the on the design side, this is, we don't interfere with any of the light air, the side yard air setbacks. This is the forty-five degree. Here's our line, so we're not increasing anything from that standpoint. This is where the garage was originally, it was right here, and this was a one-story. We're going to put, this is going to be a study, and this will be a bedroom area up above with a small study over here, so we're basically maintaining the front of this house pretty much the way it is now. And what we're asking for is that four foot here off this to get this garage in, and we still are within all of the requirements of light and air and all that stuff to the side yard. This is the porch in the back. So, there again, this would be the side yard setback right over here. This is the new garage that we're asking for, and this is the existing porch with the addition of the, there's a bathroom here, and there's a there's a master bathroom here and a bedroom over here, and this would be the dining room where the garage used to be. So, I think that basically, this is a side yard view of, from the, would be the neighbor's side. This is the this is the existing porch that's there already. So, what we're trying to do is improve the house so that Steve and Veronica can really enjoy and grow their family and enjoy the backyard, and at the same time, stay in as close as we can to being not, to be unobtrusive to the neighbors, to keep the volume down of the garage, but yet still give them the ability to have a garage in the future that would help to be a selling point, or just to help them store things, their cars, or whatever they have for their kids. And that's basically what we're asking for, is basically four foot of this piece here is encroaching onto the setback. One of the things also you need to know is that what we did is we, when we were doing this, we tried not to increase the the impact on the site, so we actually are reducing some of our coverage by doing this too from the driveway standpoint. If we go back to the the site plan, hold on a second, let me get to there. Oops, too much. I love technology. I love zoning. Oops, sorry. These are visuals of the front of the house with the garage on it. This is the, there's an existing chimney there. We're increasing the porch outside, so we have a nice porch entryway. This is the study with the bedroom above, and this is the garage next to it. This is the back porch that's existing with the existing, we're putting this as an addition above here, and this is the garage in the back. And then this is another shot from the other side of the house facing the mountain road, mountain road. So, here, this red part here is we've we're just shaving off stuff, so we don't increase the coverage more than four hundred square feet, and we're able to maintain less interaction with the site.
And again, pushing the garage toward the back of the yard would really affect, I guess, the views and the breezes that that existing screen room, sunroom would get. Screened porch, I should say.
Thank you, Pat. One of the highlights of the property was, is the yard and the lot. And we've seen that there have been a number of houses changing hands and for sale around Princeton these past few years. And we have come back numerous times to realize that we want to preserve that as much as possible and have the functionality of the things that we are talking about today and proposing to you. I mean, that's the core of our presentation. We wanted to keep it as succinct as possible for the board's sake as well, but we're certainly welcoming any questions or comments from the board members.
Oh, that was, if we pushed it, the sixteen feet, and that was the effects that it would have.
Okay. Are you board members, do you have any questions of the applicant or the applicant's architect? Maybe you can minimize your screen, please. Want to get rid of the site plan on the screen? There you go. Okay. Board members, any questions of the applicant or the owner or the architect? I just have, if, again, you did mention the fact that you're on a corner of Pardo and Mountain Avenue, did you think about putting a garage off of Mountain Avenue?
I don't think that the space allows for it. Kyle, did you want to comment on that too?
Yeah, that would be, I mean, to go, I mean, if we go back on the site plan, there's not much room to get a driveway, to get a curb cut to, I mean, off of Mountain Avenue is a tougher road than Pardo to get into that site. So, if that's what you're asking, if it has access off of Mountain Avenue, I think that would be a
It was more mature.
We'd still have a setback. Let me go to the site plan, then put the site plan back up on here if we can.
Well, you're on a corner, so you have a rear setback.
So, like, look at this. I mean, we have this huge setback here. So, wherever we brought a driveway in here, if we could get a curb cut off of there, which I don't know would be possible, our garage would still be somewhere back in here. It wouldn't be up here.
And then
And we already have a driveway and everything that's in place here.
Oh, I understand. I understand.
And I believe there's a lot of mature vegetation too in the backyard that you would disturbing.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. Okay. Any any other questions? Any other questions from board members on this? Okay. If you would like to say anything before we open this up to the public?
Sure. Just briefly, we appreciate the board's consideration. We have considered and thought through with Kyle and Pat and consulted with Mr. Bridger where needed on numerous options, and we really think we have found the best plan that also is reasonable within the zoning board's parameters. The backyard, we really were disinclined to put a separate building or anything like a driveway that wraps around, because it would essentially destroy the backyard and what the value of the of that space is to the children and to us and to the neighborhood. Our neighborhood has a similar lot and a similar house, actually, and so it would be paralleling that as well. So, thank you for your consideration.
You're welcome. Okay. If there are no other questions from the board members, I'm going to open this up to the public. Claudia, has anybody indicated they'd like to speak?
Uh, no hands. Wait one second. Wait one second.
I see one hand up. John A.
Alan?
Excuse me? Oh, there we go. Okay.
Okay, so we just need your, we can't hear you muted. If you could just unmute your unmute yourself.
You're still muted. We can see you, but maybe you can unmute yourself, and then we can hear you. Now, I see your mouth moving, but uh, the words are coming out. We can't hear anything. In the lower left-hand corner, your screen might be a uh. A symbol, oops, for a microphone.
There are statute of limitations.
Well, we'll give it another minute here and see if Mr. A comes back.
Okay.
Okay, you're you're back. You're gone. I will just give it a minute more. Um. Person wanting to speak, he comes back. They come back, we'll allow it. If not, we'll have to move on.
It does raise an interesting procedural question as to how much time we allow for people to speak and.
Yes, I think we'll give it another thirty seconds and and uh. And if if we don't hear back or get a call or something, we'll just move on. We have no choice. All right, um, I am gonna make the assumption that Mr. A is unable to continue or doesn't necessarily want to. So we're going to close the public portion of the hearing, although I will, if he does come back, we'll. Take that into consideration if we're not too far along. Um, so we'll close the public portion. Um. Will.
Wait one second. Wait one second.
He's running towards the building.
Vanessa.
Is it said it? Okay, it's Vanessa Bradsky. Can you unmute yourself and make yourself visible here? Ah.
Okay, we just need you to unmute it.
Yeah, we we can't hear. We can see you. We can't hear.
Maybe they could hold up a sign.
Well, yeah, build up a sign. I agree or not agree.
A thumbs up or a thumbs down.
Yeah.
I assume you can hear us. Okay, yeah, right, but we can't hear you. That's not gonna, that's not gonna work.
Who will not let us unmute. Okay.
All right, um, is there any way that they can call in, Claudia?
Um.
Yeah, I guess if if they, wait, wait, there you go. You're unmuted now. There you go.
Okay.
Yeah.
Speak.
Oh.
You had it there for a minute.
Well, I suppose if they want to call in, we see them on the screen. Do you want to?
You go talk.
Talk. Please speak.
It's connected to audio.
Yeah. Okay, okay.
How about mine? You want to call into the office, six oh nine. Nine two one. Seven oh seven seven. Are you calling in? Vanessa? Vanessa? Uh, yes, but I can't see you on the video. You stopped the video.
I don't know what's happening. I use the screen all the time, and I don't know why it's not working either. Okay, so um. Trying to do this. Recording in progress. Okay, yeah.
We can hear you a little bit. Is there any way you can bring your video back so we could see you then? We'd be able to see you and hear you.
Are you there? Hello?
Yeah, they seem to disappeared again. Well, get back.
We can hear that.
Vanessa, we can hear you.
You can hear me.
You can hear us. My name is me.
Anyway, you can.
Trying to get you back on. What's happening here? I'm sorry about this. I don't know what's happening. I don't have the video. The video icon is not showing up on my screen now. So I don't know how to get it to come back.
And if you move the cursor around, it's not showing up, huh? No little blue square or anything?
Yeah, I'm looking.
Perhaps we proceed without the video?
Uh, well, uh, we'll ask the applicants, do you, do you, you know, will that be all right with you?
Okay.
How's this?
Ah! You got it.
Oh, my goodness, people.
Okay, so please, Karen, swear them in.
Okay, we have Vanessa Haratsky and John. I'm sorry, we don't know your last name.
Atkins.
Atkins, okay, and your address, please.
Fifty Pardo. We live across the street.
Alrighty, and do you both swear or affirm that your testimony this evening will be truthful?
We do.
We do.
Thank you.
So, yes, we're, we just wanted to call in and say that we have absolutely no issues with um the addition that um Steve and Veronica are proposing. Um.
For context, we're right across the street from them.
We can see them from our front windows. Um, it seems like a absolutely um great plan that they have. Had their architects draw up. Um, and.
Yeah, we talked to them about it. We thought it made a lot of sense, and uh, it it seems very organic to the way the house presents. Right now, so we think it's a good plan.
Okay.
Hey.
And sorry it took this long. This is ridiculous.
Okay, thank you for your persistence. Okay, is that, is that all you'd like to say?
I think so, yeah.
Okay. That's fine. You support the application.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. Um, Claudia, has anyone else indicated they'd like to speak?
There are no more hands.
Good. Okay, so hearing no more. Potential speakers, we're going to close the public portion of the hearing. Allow the applicant to make closing remarks and then go into executive session.
We thank you for your consideration. I think we've expressed our our desires and um everything that we wanted to present to the board tonight. Well, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, thank you, and uh, we'll go into executive session. Board members. Questions, comments, motions? Yes, Michael.
Yeah, it's um, I believe it's, it's one of those unusual restrictions. It's a corner lot. Which has two main setbacks, so it's kind of hard to cite an addition. Um. And meet that, and. You know, I I can live with um the new construction going over the setback line. Um. And also noting that it's really only one story that's impinging on that side yard setback, so. Given that it's a corner lot, I. I'm okay with it.
I agree with Michael, but yeah, I I'm a big. Opponent of the setback of the garage, but I noted on this one that if you set the garage back, you're gonna pick up more coverage. And so I can understand why you wouldn't want to push the garage back sixteen feet. Uh, so I like what you're doing too.
I I somewhat agree with you, Stephen. Um, I. The garage set, basically they're moving the house forward and keeping the garage where it is. So so by that. Gesture, they're moving the garage back technically. I do agree with the architects that pushing the garage back sixteen feet is going to create a a light issue in the dining room and also. Impinge on the the. Use of the porch, so I would, I would concur with Michael and yourself that keeping the garage in that location would be acceptable. Any other comments or would someone like to make a motion?
I'll move approval as a C one. Um. Of this application of the two variances.
Thank you.
I'll second. Fine.
Okay.
One second.
Uh, George. Um. Is there any discussion of the motion? Okay, Claudia, can you please call a roll?
Olson? Yes. Davich?
Immune it.
Sorry, yeah, uh, yes. Yeah. Jimmy? Hello?
We got that. Did you get that?
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Panama?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Herman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, thank you for coming and presenting. Good luck with your addition.
Yep.
You.
Thank you, board.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Okay, um, we have no further business this evening. Uh, Derek, you'll circulate possibly a memo with some dates so we can all talk about. Uh, discussing the minutes miscellaneous other administrative things.
Yeah.
Sure, okay, good. Excellent. We're adjourned.
Thank you. Good night.
Good day.
Right.